Good evening, and welcome to the regular village council meeting, September 23rd, 2019. And it is now 7:00 PM. Welcome, everybody. Could you please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance? That's how we meet us.
(Inaudible)
Bryce?
Yes.
Budson?
Here.
Eschman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Yep. Next up, we have to do some more questions.
I'd like to make a recommendation. I know there's two trustees under U Business 12, Item B. I'd like to make a sub one and a sub two, so each party could have their own view, right? So my recommendation is, in that, Pat had something in the paper, etc., I'd like to have him go first, and then I'd let him follow him if that's not a problem.
I don't think, do we need to make any adjustments? We just simply take turns when it's time? Correct.
Yeah, well, I don't know that there's dialogue in between. I mean, there's different viewpoints, right? So I think that's important to show that, and that's why I thought you'd like to...
Well, we have Dan first, so Dan can go first, and then Pat can follow. Does that work?
No.
You would like to...
You want to flip it. My recommendation would be to...
Oh, you wanted to flip it? Okay.
I would.
Okay. We can do that. But it's a discussion, so we'll just kind of keep it, and everybody decide when they would like to go. How's that? Anything else on the agenda? Motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
All right. Motion by Councilman Budson, supported by Councilman Hayden, to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of our minutes, and we have the minutes of the regular meeting from August 26th, the minutes of the zoning board of appeals from August 26th, and we also have the joint authority meeting minutes from September 4th. That is the fire board authority. Or fire board, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 26th, zoning board of appeals meeting August 26th, and the minutes of the joint authority of September 4th as presented. Support.
Who wants it? All right. Motion by Councilman, that's what it was, by Councilman Robinson. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up, we have our acceptance items, and that is our building department report, the ordinance violation report, and we have board minutes from the planning commission, the downtown development authority, and the Brandon Township. And we would also like to include an acceptance and a recognition and introduction to Mary Ahlsted, who is our new cleaner. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate the efforts, and we really love our downtown. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I go? I'd just like to make a motion, excuse me, the ordinance violation tracking, it seemed there's quite a good reduction there, and I thought that, weren't we going to leave on the ones that were clear like a month ahead, so we know which ones cleared out, and then following ones you eliminated? Is that what happened?
Yes, that is what happened, and so you should look at the reverse side.
All right, so those are the ones that dropped off?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Next up is our dispersals for the month.
I have a question on the violation report. Line three, the death of the permit or inspection per D P citations on earliest opportunity 10/15/19. Where did that 10/15/19 date come from?
I can answer that question. It is 180 days, 180 days after the building proof was issued.
Okay.
As soon as we...
Thank you. And then with these letters that are sent out that are non-compliance, are we following suit, for example, all dumpsters, taking out like a, the letter said, maybe 14 days or 30 days? They're all the same, so we're treating everybody the same with a dumpster? We're treating everybody the same with setbacks or notches weeds? Or is it a case-by-case basis, which the deadline is?
Yeah, it's a case-by-case. Typically, with your, like, notches weeds, it's going to be a 10-day deadline. Light, a lot of times, might be a little bit longer than 10 days, but...
Who's deciding that date? You?
I am.
You're deciding how long it's going to take to put...
Yeah, I, what I might do is try to look at a reasonable amount of time for the people to get the notice, and they can get an action plan in place. Because this is just, this is the first step that hopes to bring compliance without any further action. And I'm hopeful that if people have a problem with it or question it, they'll call me.
We don't have any issues that, if we're treating, you know, cases differently with that? All right, that was the question.
We're just trying to be accommodating to the people, and solve the problems, you see.
All right, so we also have the acceptance items. Next up is our dispersals.
I have a question, number 26, and I know we've brought this up many times before, the task to do with the charter of franchise fees. Is that going to be spent, or...
That's a question for the treasurer. I think it's passed through money and comes to us, and then we should...
So it's a better deal, right? So it's not money going out, it's money coming in?
It's coming, it's, we're passing it through, so it's coming into us and then going back out to Brandon. That's my understanding, but I could be wrong.
Then a certain percentage of it comes back to us. I don't have the numbers memorized, but we get about between 10 and 15 percent, and Brandon gets the rest. But we, we see that it's from somewhere, right? I mean, that's chartering. We get it first, and then we disperse it over to Brandon. And then we have, and you'll see that in upcoming meetings, where we'll have the breakdown of all of it. Okay. Thank you.
I know we have the...
I have a question on number 30. Does anybody know when the lot was last tested? And if we don't know it, we can find out to make sure that it is, it is working and functioning?
It is working and functioning, because every time there's a bird in there, we get a call.
Okay. Are you sure it's a bird and not a bat? Okay, all right, because, so that's, that is working. Number six. Bob, what nameplate? Okay, Pat. Bob McArthur? Okay, and nameplate? Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to pay our dispersals between August 16th through September 15th, 2019, in the amount of $33,007.31 and 29 cents.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Sponka, supported by Councilman Husham. Please, please have a look at what I have. Budson?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Sponka?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Seven zero, motion carries. We're sending your agendas, the treasurer's report. I'm here to get a motion for now.
We're just accepting it?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report for the month ending August 30th, 2019, as presented. Support. Can I ask a question? I thought we were going to move that to the accepted, except with the data and the detail, right? And then therefore, it would be a motion, but we'd be part of acceptance, like we talked about that last month, because of the level of detail, you know, we'd have to audit her, so that's what we discussed last month. Are we going to move that to...
I thought it was an acceptance. I personally like to see the journal. I like to, I, you know, I mean, I know some others trustees don't care to see it, but I do, because I like to see that, because I found some discrepancies in the past, but the treasurer's report is an acceptance item, so I don't think that we needed to make a motion to accept it. It just goes in with our acceptance items under six.
Yeah, I'm just commenting. I thought we commented it last month, we put it into acceptance items, but still have the level of detail provided, so... Well, we have the approval for others, for the other things, I mean, we're just accepting that. I guess we could put it together, couldn't we? I know we did discuss it, but I don't...
And I know the discussion went from, it's two in acceptance, but do we want to combine it or to keep it separate? I guess I don't think we had that specific discussion.
Is it that consensus, such as council, that probably works for me? I think, my opinion is that, why have two different acceptance items? You know, it should be under the whole bucket of acceptance items, and listed as D or whatever it should be, but with the same detail as what we've had in the past, should you choose to prove it or not, but just accept it.
I agree with that. Yeah, I'm...
So then we also then would need to amend our rules of procedure, I believe, as well. I think it's in rules of procedure, that way I don't have it with me, but...
Oh, because we specified the agenda.
Right.
We can adjust it, that's, yeah, but, okay.
So at this point, we have a motion table by Councilman Budson, supported by Councilman Robinson, to accept treasurer's report. Any further questions or discussion for this one? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries seven zero. We'll look into October.
And then Dale, if practice, update our rules of procedure, and we can just change that to...
And next up, we have our public comments, and that will be at this time on agenda items only. If you have a comment that's something on the agenda, that would be the time to share it. If you have something that is now the agenda, we'd appreciate if you wait until 15, which is the night of the day. So go ahead and feel free to step to the podium and share your name with us.
My name is Sharon Wyatt, 173 Village Court. I read the article, or the citizen, you know, about the park, and I was wondering when they are going to start developing it.
I can tell you that we have a discussion on the park. It does not mean there will or won't be any development. I think we have people that would like to, and people that would not like to, and I think that's, that's a point of discussion to start with that.
Well, I thought it was, it belonged to the village. So what does that mean?
Could you just clear a minute, question? What does it mean as...
What does it mean for the people? Does that mean the entire council decides what's good for us?
Well, I can't speak for everybody, but speaking for myself, we do have resident input. We make all of our decisions, and so I think that's why we'd like to start a discussion at this point.
Do they do surveys?
I don't think we've gotten that far as to what we will be at with, but we'd love to hear is your input, and what you think, or what you agree with, or what you don't like, or what you'd like to see. That would be a great time to share with us.
Chair, in answer to your question, it is village property, belongs to people.
Well, I believe that it should be developed. You know, a couple of years ago, you know, they said they were going to put up signs and clear it away, you know, and I've been anxiously awaiting what's going on.
That's it?
Thank you.
Chair.
For further comments, Roberts will say this is for public comment only, and we're not to dialogue between the two, so we're here to listen to the residents' opinions one way or another.
Right, and if somebody asks a question, then we can address a question.
I'll give you my opinion now. Okay. My opinion is that I fully support Pat George's ideas, and I support the planning commission for trying to get it into the master plan. I support, to a limited amount, some type of development in that area. I think that's what we feel to the village to do, and I think it's about time that we make some effort to do that. I said, Ron Sutton, 57 Church Street. Thank you, Ron.
Okay, I guess this must be the time, sorry. I don't know how procedure really works here.
You're just welcome to step forward and state your name, and what you'd like to share.
Yes, I'm Glenn Merrill. I live at 709 Bald Eagle Lake Road, with my elderly mother now. I just recently returned to Michigan. I've been actually gone for about 30 years. But Mom showed me the article in the paper, and I thought, that's a wonderful idea. I realize there's a lot to do with the balance between cost and effort, and what you can do and not do, but I'm here to say that I support developing a bike path, hiking trail, something, you know, that citizens like me would volunteer to go help you build trails at a minimal cost, and we could certainly, at the least, have somewhere that people could go to hike, like me with my two large dogs. I would love to have a 47-acre park to get on the trails, and not have cars going by me at 50 miles an hour on the side of M-15, or even on Bald Eagle Lake Road, some of them do 50 miles an hour by me there, where it's literally one and a half lanes. So it's, it's something that I would really love to see, and I'd be happy to help build trails, you know, at least for a minimal amount of development that would make it usable as a trail system. Doesn't have to be a big monetary expenditure and all kinds of things. Trail building is relatively easy, and I'll help do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
My name is Lois Robbins, 5275 Sherwood Road. You don't have to pay any attention to me, because I don't live in the village, but I did, did you get my email this afternoon? It was kind of late, I'm sorry. But I would like to recommend is that the park that the village owns, the discussion with that, be able now to provide time to explore the possibility of putting a conservation easement on that property. That would protect it from further development in perpetuity. You would, you as the council, would have the opportunity to carve out in a conservation easement, items of development that you might like to do there in future, like, I don't know, a picnic shelter, or trail development, or whatever. And you can specify those things in the conservation easement that allows those things to happen. But other than that, no development would be allowed on the property. That would protect it forever. And one other thing I would like to point out is that that property does, is adjacent to the school property, some school property, so it could offer a wonderful opportunity for outdoor classrooms. I believe Dr. Outlaw would be very supportive of that idea. He has been supportive of that kind of thing in the past. And I invited Sue Ju in here. She's also not a resident, but she is the director of the North Oakland Headwaters Land Conservancy, which would be the logical one to use. It's our local conservancy. And I just would like you to, you know, take a breath. I know there's a lot of urgency among some of the residents for things to happen there, but I do think it might be a good idea to explore the possibility of a conservation easement on the property.
Thank you.
Glenn, man, 57 Church Street. I do not feel anyone in this council has the right to take that property from the village to protect it. Protect it from what? It backs up, just, great point, backs up to the school. Great opportunity. Has anybody approached the school, and seen that the school would like to go in with the village to create classrooms? My children grew up in Florida, their back of their elementary was in a cedar swamp, a cypress, sorry, wrong tree, and they developed a boardwalk with education platforms out there, and it was utilized daily. And has anybody approached the township? This would be an asset to township. So I don't want to hear, I had a great conversation with Mark Robinson this morning about costs. I understand, the village bears a lot of costs, but have you approached the school? Have you approached the township? Don't take this from the village. No one sits on this council and has the right to protect it from us. It's ours, we have the right. If we want walking paths, we're not talking paving. Was brought up that the fire department and the police department would not support. I forgot how it was worded. How can they not? It's part of our village. How can they say we're not going to come out there, send a concern number one? The issue of, what are you going to do about porta-potties and service center? You have them at the staging areas. You do not have the right to say, we are not going to develop it, because it's convenient for some people's backyards to stay like a yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. Some of you may know me already. I'm the director of the North Oakland Headwaters Land Conservancy, and I am new to the issue that is being brought up here, but I'm not new to land conservation. There are probably 8,000 land conservancies across the United States, and ours, representing the northwest townships here, are active with a number of different organizations. So for instance, in Holly, we have a conservation easement on a public park that protects the wetlands, that prevents the park from being flooded. In Independence Township, we have a conservation easement. The township continues to own the property, and we help to manage and guard the property, guard the conservation easement. That particular property has been discovered to have the last of a little butterfly that is disappearing, so we are engaged in helping with that. In a number of different organizations, a conservation easement can be helpful. So you may not be familiar with this, so I have a pamphlet here, but I'm going to pass around to you to read, and we are not bringing to the table a funding source. We're a private nonprofit group, and when we place a conservation easement on property, it's with the consent and the agreement of the owner of the property, which will continue to be the council. So, for example, we have an easement on 250 acres of camp in Rose Township. They manage camp. We assist with protecting the conservation values. Sometimes we help bring in volunteers. We have been helpful in bringing, by being a collaborator, we've been helpful in bringing additional money that they can use to help manage the camp. So I'm here to say that we're around, we may be useful to you, and I'd like you to explore the possibility of a conservation easement on a property that includes some pretty pristine areas, and look a lot of it personally for you.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate that. Liz, could you take those and pass those down to us? Thank you very much.
Lieutenant Glover, I'm the Brandon Township Substation Commander. Just wanted to comment on her comments. First of all, and I think I can speak for the park department as well, there was never anything talked about that we did not support a trail system one way or the other. That is flat up. That is flat up, not true. However, we did state that there is a cost that comes with that, because whether it's police apparatus, fire apparatus, we have to be able to get into those locations, so there's a cost that comes with that. The other thing is, that trail system, if there was a trail system put in there, runs alongside of an elementary school. I am not for a trail system, for the most part, alongside an elementary school. There's a whole nother avenue of things that comes with a trail system next to schools, especially an elementary school. And those are documented incidents throughout, not only our county, but other counties, but I just want to clear up that we've never supported or not supported a trail system. But like I said, we have to be able to get equipment back to certain locations if somebody was injured and can't come out on their own. I just want to clear up about that. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. That's my problem presented to me, so I'm afraid you could...
My name is Tom Roberts, and I'm a village resident, too, and I'd just like to state that I'd be heavily in favor of supporting, developing the park with a trail system, anything that we can do to improve our village residents' lives, and I really like Quinn's idea of a volunteer system whereby we can keep the cost down to a minimal. Maybe it's something we can organize. It's just, thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
And we ask you a question.
My name is Mark Lamont, living in Preston Hills, South. And so I back up to the park, the proposed park area that we're speaking about, and I spent quite a bit of time back there. And it is beautiful, but I have a number of concerns, mostly the cost of it. You know, the village is burdened with a lot of different costs, so this initial cost, if there was funding, grants, or something like this, it would be great. I think one of the things you have to remember is, there's a legacy for the funding and the maintenance, all the stuff. Also, roughly, approximately 33,000 by acres of this park area is almost completely swamp or water, so it would mean that construction, elevated platforms, and this sort of thing. And then once you start down, let's say we just want to have walking trails, okay? I walk back here in this, in this wooded area all the time. It is a treasure, it really is. Beautiful, huge cedar trees, probably over 100 years old, springs coming up out of the ground, little cascading waterfall, and I think everybody should be able to share that. The problem is going to be, logistically, I think... The problem is going to be, logistically, I think, how do you safely get people in and out of the area? Can fire and can police respond if somebody twists an ankle or gets lost in it or something? So I have a number of concerns about it. So I'm glad that we're all talking about it. I think the village needs something like this. It is a treasure, and it is part of all of what our taxes are going towards. We should be able to enjoy it. But I hope we're not burdened with the beginning of a trail system and then suddenly somebody wants to improve it. And there's always the question of accessibility for handicapped individuals, which means more costs. So I want everybody to think about all these different things before we go ahead. But I wish we could just, and he's been there for a long time, and I wish everybody could see it and experience it, but as I said, I have a lot of concerns about how that's going to affect us from a cost perspective and a safety perspective. And I think there are probably a lot of people that would volunteer to help maintain it and build it. Okay?
Anybody else want to join us? All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we do have our consent agenda, which contains the special events permits for the Brandon High School homecoming parade, the harvest ones and Halloween parade, the DDA eats in the streets, and the DDA witches' night out. The consent agenda also includes the MDOT annual permit for work on the state Trump line right away. Any other questions?
Who to approve the consent on? That's presented.
Motion by councilman Scharnicar, supported by councilman Batso. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries, seven to zero. And we have trustee Hammond up for state. So what's her part?
The fire authority board met, and Chief Brock, this is your, and that's coming up on our next, we'll tell you, on the general. It's all like chief. Assistant General.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, sadly pursuing a, as far as Parks and Rec itself is going. This Saturday is the big September 15th and 30th anniversary. A lot of precaution out in the papers. And I know with Brandon, we're pushing that well, so we're forward to that. I guess what I'm saying there, Mark, I think there are also a lot, but I think we're going to have a table and chairs and sit down and have some literature to pass on. We'll be there. Thank you.
Yeah, the planning commission, it was unfortunate that we did not have one of our planning commissioners, and we also received a resign. And the planning commissioners did express their regrets over that resignation. But then we moved on to our business, and we did discuss the, as council requested, took a look at the ordinance and Bill Devine's interpretation in relation to zoning board of appeals, the last zoning board of appeals, that affects Main Street. And our conclusion was that the fence, his interpretation of the status of that fence was consistent with our existing zoning ordinances. However, we also recognized that those zoning ordinances are not clear. There is some ambiguity when it comes to the side street and fences and stuff like that. So we also recognize that that ordinance does need review as well. We did, in the course of looking at discussing zoning ordinances in general coming up, we said that we feel we most likely will need to have some kind of professional support and assistance in preparing the update on zoning ordinance once the master plan is finally approved. So that's one thing that we wanted to make sure the council was aware of, so we could start thinking about eventually contracting or putting up the experts to assist us with the revision for some of the master plans approved.
Are you reading from the planning commission?
I'm looking through.
Because that's where we've all been provided that, right?
Yep. And I guess that's basically, we did also have a short discussion on master planning and getting approved. And it's basically.
From the roads, obviously the DBW's been actively involved with crack sealing. I'm not quite sure how much they've completed. I'll let Dale comment to that. And then also, from a drainage perspective, there are, as the paper indicated, elevation work going on to find out the best route to drain Crossman Park area. That's going to cost us a considerable amount of money that we'll have to look over other projective or recommended projects. So I'll let Dale, I don't know if you have anything more to say about the work being done on the elevations? Has that started yet? You going to bring somebody in for that?
Yes, we have a firm from Clarkson who is going to assist us with the topographic surveys. To my knowledge, we're on a list of their projects, and they have not yet started. I'll let council know as soon as we get any information and that they are present. We continue to do the ceiling, line ceiling that you're talking about throughout the village on a regular basis, and the DBW is doing a great job of dealing with that. But as everybody is aware, there are a number of sections of our roads that need some considerable work. And I'm hopeful to, within the next few months, develop a long-term schedule or project for the council to consider on how we will deal with our roads and how we can deal with them piecemeal until we can obtain some kind of a grant that would give us better funding because it's a big cost project, but it is one that has to be dealt with.
Do we hope to see something resolved though this year as far as, you know, with the drainage issue?
Well, it depends on which drainage issue you're discussing, but if you're talking about the schoolhouse.
Oh, no, I was talking about Crossman Park.
Well, Crossman Park, yes. We, both with Crossman Park and with, I may not be saying it right, schoolhouse. I still have to have Bob take me out and show me exactly where we are and what we've done, and then I'm going to have some discussion with Row because they reported, they proposed what we did and made great assurances that this was a fix, and it obviously isn't. So I'm going to see what I can do with them to take some ownership in that and then look at what are the practical ways to resolve it. I have yet had an opportunity to look at all the files that the village has with regard to roads, but I want to read through all of that first to understand where we have been and what we have attempted to do, and then have an, entertain a discussion with council as to where we go from there. All right. My only concern with being on a list, we don't know how long the list is and where we're at on the list. So if there's any sense of timing you can get from the engineering firm on the elevation part of it, it would be helpful. All right, very good. We'll do that.
Wayfinding Committee met earlier this month. Both myself and Melanie and I went out and took a bunch of photos of our existing signs all throughout the village. Some of them we have issues where we have like tree branches or trees itself, you know, blocking some of these signs and that, or they're like old, not as bright and visual as they once were and that. So a couple of things are going on with that. The DDA is going to help out with comparing out some of this area, or we will work with the DBW as well on that. And then also, our DDA has offered a real nice service through Main Street level community. It's about a $6,500 value where they'll come in and they'll do an assessment of all of our signs and everything throughout the village. And I would like to see us move forward and utilize those resources. And I just want to make sure that, first of all, we have council's approval to go ahead and move forward with this. And I'd like to see the report come back to council. That way we can make a determination based on that information how we're going to move forward.
Lieutenant President, if I could just make one additional comment. I think it's very important that we, from the beginning of this project, that we make it clear that this is a council project, and it will be reviewed and discussed by the wayfinding committee to come back to the council for decisions. And other bodies can give input to that, but the decisions will have to be made by the council.
Historical Society met earlier this month, and we're gearing up for September Fest on Saturday. There will be kids' games, and there'll be hot dogs and soup. And there'll be ghost tours, I believe it's October 26th. And I would just like to send out congratulations to Mary Allison, Army SEAL binder, Citizens of the Year, and they're also members on the historical signing. They're very instrumental.
All right. So the DDA has offered the grant, as Mark has already mentioned. And as long as that's something that we agree to, they would like to have that. So they'll definitely take that back. You've had a chance to see the minutes that are enclosed and also the MEDC Ready Development Program information that was in the supplemental information at the back. That's something that the DDA discussed that they are interested in pursuing, and that would be a partnership with the DDA, with the personnel, I'm sorry, the planning and the council. So they gave you a chance to review that, see if that's something we might be interested in partnering with that. So that's why that one's in there. And we also have received through the DDA a couple of grants for businesses in town. I'd love to definitely highlight the work put in for that. It's exciting. There was a placemaking grant that was received, and then also a facade grant. So the efforts that are being put in by our local businesses to attract that is definitely something we're thankful for, and so I want to make sure to highlight that. Our eats in the streets is September 26th, September plus September 28th, and witches' night is October 12th. That's all they have to report.
I'll just make a comment. I just was wondering if the DDA would be interested in maybe next year having witches and warlocks.
I may just say warlocks.
I'm just thinking to expand it so there's no exclusivity, but it's like witches and warlocks. So just to put it out there. You heard it here first.
And you will start with our new business. And the first up, we have the fire department request to hire.
Good evening. January, we hired three new firefighters to fill in positions and so that we could open Station Three. One of those firefighters started the process in about March, April to look to a bigger department, and it's finally taken this long to, for him to accept a job with a bigger department. So we're going to have to replace him. So this is not an addition to, this is just simply a replacement. He is leaving the 28th of September, and we would like to get the next person that's in line, who meets all qualifications, has been a paid-on call firefighter with us since 2015, and also is a paramedic and fire one and two. Questions?
I'll make a motion to hire Fred Aindall.
Yep.
As a full-time firefighter, paramedic, as soon as possible to replace firefighter and medic, Colin Pierce.
Aye.
And any questions?
I do have a question for you. So I know we had started this list. How many do you still have on that list?
I have one person left on the list, but unfortunately does not meet all the qualifications.
So then it's, so basically you're going to be starting all over with the testing and creating another list?
Yep. Once we determine the grant to hire additional, yes. If we have somebody else leave before then, yes, we'll have to create another list.
All right. Motion by councilman Scharnicar, supported by councilman Hayden. Do we need a roll call?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, seven to zero.
Excellent.
And we is the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park Discussion. And first up, we have.
First, I want to thank the number of people that have come today.
Really hard to hear.
Really hard to hear.
Better.
Everybody's hard to hear. They all need to speak up. Larry, Larry, we had the finest idea. We really need to hear what you're saying. Your microphones are for TV only. They're not for this crowd.
Let me see if I can amplify a little bit better. I guess I don't want to keep this too long, but I do want to put some additional comments in that citizens email us on. Marion, for example, could not come to the meeting tonight, but believes that the park idea would certainly be a good idea to develop trails for people to walk through. There's that, which I got them from her. Marissa Prince, very, very nice letter here, greetings. Also, somebody who frequently walks downtown, I'm very interested in additional places to walk. Places to walk away where vehicles and, and streets are not paved or whatever. I'd love to see the trails within this wooded area. I use them for myself as well as my kids for nature walks. Goes on, says she has a nice, uh, nature walks. Just a couple more. Laura Hoffman says, "It was the original purpose of this park to be developed for recreation of residents. I won't go wandering in the woods with my kids, even if it's a public park. But if there were trails, my family would love to hike." And she's all for that. Sarah Brennan says, "I'm not a village resident, however, I do village business on a regular basis, and a park within walking the trails would be a benefit to the community." And her Thomas says, "Wow, this is somebody I agree with. I never knew there was 46 acre park here, and I've lived here for 17 years. Heather, I've been in the village for 25 years, and I didn't know that either. A nature walk with trails would be great. Need more information from the village." Jan, it's the pastor there, living in Ortonville for over 25 years. We love to see a trail system. Dog walker, always looking for good places to walk my dogs. My husband is a marathon runner. I'm not going to run a road, get a run. I appreciate your presence, Laura. Would be a wonderful addition. Okay, so those are some of the comments. What I'd like to do now, and I'm only going to read a part of the letter, all right, that I sent to the paper. And then I'm going to turn this over to Rick. I thought this was a good piece of work. The Enchanted Forest. Let me tell you a story about it. The Enchanted Forest that nobody in town knows about. It's a 47 acre plot of trees and other vegetation with streams and birds and animals, you know, things that you'd expect a forest to have. And years ago, this parcel of Eden was deeded to the townsfolk with the stipulation that they preserve and protect its resources and develop it for the recreational pleasure of its citizens. Some years back, this parcel of land was named Ortonville Village Park. If you look closely, you can find it on our village map. Yes, right there, in little color. I've lived in this town for 25 years, and I never knew it was there either. Where our village planning commission saw and thought it would be a great idea to develop the trail system in our forest that would allow our citizens the opportunity to hike, picnic, and to enjoy its natural beauty and serenity. Their surveys indicate there's significant numbers. Their surveys indicate there's a significant number of our citizens also feel the same way about it. I won't read the rest of it yet. But that's pretty much it. Obviously, I'll tell you what, when I first saw this, when I became Parks and Recreation on person and I first saw this park and I went, wow, I know I don't get out there much, but this is big. And I've just been on it ever since. I very quietly have listened during master plan meetings and things. And basically, I've been very heartbroken and stunned at this possible suggestion to the members of the council that it's a good idea to keep this park under wraps. And I don't get that at all. Any might, might time come to express my sentiments on this park. And I will continue to do so until I feel that we do the right thing in this village. I would like to say something else. Another building for village and the trustees know what village I refer to, the building I'm referring to. Definitely let down, let down a whole hand, it's unfortunate. But on this particular.
Excuse me, I can barely understand you, Dr. Hayden.
Yes, I'm saying that there was a building that is in the village also, or Brandon Towns, that when that went, I remember reading you about that, remember that story about that? So when this particular, when I saw this, I thought, oh, this is just an incredible opportunity for this village. And I feel that way very strongly. I also agree that for four people to be able to both bounce something like this, that's a public park, I just think this is a travesty of our park position. And I will also say that if we are truly here to serve our people, I think if I got to send out postcards again, like we did on trash haulers, and people there came back and said, hey, we would like one trash haul, we hope it's community, and I got the message. So I'm hoping that this council gets the message that the people in this town, not just myself, want this particular park to go into the impact. So I don't want to wind anybody up any more than that. My main speaker here, that's the head person on this project, Rick McInnes, who are our planning commission. Rick has spent over 40 years in the forestry area. He's a graduate from Michigan State University, which when Rick graduated, had one of the best forestry programs in the country. Today, Michigan State still has one of the best forestry programs in the country. And I say he's worked over 40 years in this area. A lot of years with the U.S. Forestry Service and also the U.S. Issues and Wildlife Division. For the last almost 20 years, Rick has been private consultant. This is what he does. Sometimes, you know, we would say an expert is somebody that has to travel more than 50 miles to come. And frequently, we have someone within our midst that can be just as good. So it's not about getting an expert. In our presence tonight with Rick, we have the expert on this whole park idea. So I'm going to let him do his thing and present. I'll be here to build an DDA very quickly. I'll talk, thanks. And I hope you're working on some stuff.
All right. A lot more than I expected. Is it okay if I have this, then you can wrap this thing? I do have a little bit of a presentation here. Pat and I put it together jointly, but so I'm going to actually function as two hundred people tonight. First, I'm going to be working, presenting information from the point of view of the planning mission and our master plans. And then I'm going to change to be consulting forester and biologist regarding explanations of how we forestry, natural resource professionals would develop, help people develop management plans for their property, forest and wetlands, et cetera. So anyway, so for those of you, it's interesting, not everybody knows. I don't know where I can stand without being somebody great. So I assume most people are familiar with our village park. It's 47 acres. It was deeded to the village from the developers of Crescent Hill subdivision. And that was back in the eighties. And it's often called a swamp or a wetland, but it's actually an upland hardwood and conifer and lowland conifers, mostly cedars and tamarack swamp. And a marsh and a deeper swamp down over in this area right here. And this is a bit of a tamarack swamp, and this is upland hardwoods. And so it's quite a complex of different habitats it would come to. Anyway, so I'm just going to go through some of the references to this in our current village. Oh, okay. Just page down. This is a low-tech substrate for a PowerPoint presentation because we couldn't figure out that part yet. So I'm just going. Yeah, see, it's kind of jumpy. I think we'll get through it without too much trouble. It's a little bit better than an overhead projector.
I can work an overhead projector faster.
You want to operate? No, no. Okay. So the Ortonville Master Plan, we had it approved, the village council approved it in 2008, and then re-approved it with a few little changes. I think it was 2014, I'm not sure. But anyway, this is a reference to that village park. And these are the statements in the master plan that says what appropriate uses are for natural preserve areas, blue forest and conservation uses, other uses do not require permanent construction of buildings or other structures. However, small-scale buildings or structures related to parks of conservation use, since it has gazebo's, and I put in pavilions because that's really what we were intending. Boardwalk trail systems are appropriate in natural preserve areas. That's in our master plan. I had a bunch of stuff in our master plan referred to it. Yes. What?
Two more minutes. You have two more minutes.
She's sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a time favor.
How many minutes total are we done?
Two minutes. This is a public comment.
This is not. Boy, you shocked me there.
Getting on your toes.
Okay. All right. So that's in the master plan. Let me see if I can get this down a little further. And this is what starts, what talks about in the Brandon Ortonville Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which the village council adopted in 2015. So a vision for parks, pathways, and recreation in Brandon Township and village Ortonville. Purpose is this plan to guide recreation planning and development efforts in the village over the next five years. So part of this, we did various meetings and surveys. One of them was a joint planning permissions open house. But we just picked a few more pertinent. Results from those. Ah, man. All right. So residents gave us their input. The most popular types of recreation activities are blocking, hiking, and trail sports and nature activities. So most respondents thought they wanted blocking and bicycling paths, nature trails, playground structures, spray park, I don't know what that is, picnic areas, and that was a pavilion. That's from our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So those are what we are operating under now. All right. So trail development was recognized as a priority for the community. This is part of the action plan that refers to that park. Prepare a development plan for the undeveloped park, but I don't know about behavior. I don't know where that got in, but pedestrian access, picnic areas, sheltered trails, preservation of wildlife, sensitive areas that are given. Other improvements, development could include development of boardwalk and gloom platform over the creek and associated wetlands. And then there was further ideas of providing access points, parking, pedestrian, mountain areas, trail map benches, trash receptacle, bike racks, mile markers would imply, and interpretive directional sign. Interpretive usually means things about the natural world. Okay, so, and then our more recent surveys that we did for getting citizen input for our new master plan that we've been working on. Interesting question, which surprised me, that about 55% of the people knew about this village park or wildlife preservation park at College Lady. And 45% didn't know anything about it, which is, I live right next to it, so to me, I've always known about it. But I guess that's reasonable. Now, how should the property be used? This is our most recent information right here. And this is only Ortonville residents' results. The largest number of people want, 90 people, want nature trails and walking paths. And 30% of people wanted a defined public access point of a park area, and 29% want picnic areas. And smaller numbers of other, 24% want left untouched. Okay. So that's all the information I have from our master plan, our Parks and Rec Master Plan. And that's what we are theoretically operating under until we have a new master plan and a new Parks and Recreation Plan. So this is some research I did just in Michigan here. Typical park amenities. We have 74 state parks, 60 of them have hiking and biking trails. State recreation areas, 18 of those, and 17 have trails. National forests, 4, in Michigan, and all four of them have trails. I worked at two of them in the past. National wildlife records, there's four. I've worked in two of those. And they all have trails. National parks, lake shores, same thing. Open county parks, just not the county parks, but the parks in open county. There's about 130 of them. 72 have hiking trails, 24 have biking trails, and 35 that have cross-country ski trails. And as far as picnic areas, 98 of them have table and seven floor shelters. So that's really my input into this question of how to manage a park. So now, I'm no longer the planning commission person for the moment, I'm a consulting forester and biologist. And so what the standard process is for those of us to do these kind of forest management plans for any kind of natural land, whether it be private lands or public, municipal, university, whatever, is the first thing we do is determine the goals that the people have for their property. And in the case of municipal, it's the goals that the managers, like Parks Recreation Crew, have. So the first thing you do is gather information of what they have there, what they know about what they have there. This is a forest stewardship program assessment form that I use all the time from the Michigan VNR. And this particular one I'm working on at the moment is for Hotwoods Nature Center, which is in Auburn Hills, just east of the Palace of Auburn Hills. I can still say the Palace of Auburn Hills for at least a little while. So I'm working with the naturalists over there and the Parks and Recreation Director. And this is the kind of information we gather. We gather a bunch of information about the location and legal description and how many acres it is, how many acres are going to be in the forest management program, and whether they're enrolled in other programs, a brief statement of your overall goals and objectives. So we would, when it gets to this point, we, together, planning commission and council, and if we have a committee of interested citizens, we would develop these goals for the, not these goals, we develop our goals for the, for these parks. So in this case, you know, you can read that preservation, natural habitats, environmental education, managing diversity, things like that. So the next thing you ask is to rank the following resources by one being higher priority, five being low priority, and three being medium. So wildlife, fisheries, timber, recreation, aesthetic quality, threatened or endangered species. In this case, they have a, at the nature center, insect research with MSU that they really value and have been doing for quite a while. How much time invested in your forest, 500 hours, 300 plus dollars a year is what they pay for it. Mostly volunteer hours. And they're not interested in timber harvest. That's one of the questions, obviously, for forest management. It's just fish, wildlife habitat types that they know that they already have. Marshes streams, deer wintering areas, old fields, oak stands, ashman stands. So anyway, and then probably the most important question is, what wildlife species are most important to you? And in this case, this, these are ones that are most important. Comments that we got are making this, the nature centers protected property from commercial development. Word development disappeared. Okay. Any threatened or endangered species on the property? Massa saw rattlesnake in that case. So they do what they can to protect those rattlesnakes. Any wetland, dry parion areas, yes. And then stream crossings, forest roads. What recreation activities? I'm just skipping through here. Hiking, camping, wildlife observation, environmental education, and those in between. So this is the kind of information you have to gather if you want to make a forest management plan. So, okay, so then the next step, you got that information, the next step is to delineate what seem to be light stands on an aerial photo or satellite photo of the property. And for instance, this is a whole Kickery Woods, this whole upland area, whereas this right here is a marsh, wetland. This is a couple of forested areas. That's a forested area, that's the entrance area that's all mowed, and this is a pond. And this is a grassland. And that's it. So I put plots in there, sample plots, to go through and sample all the trees, all the vegetation, and go from one plot to the next, do all the sampling, and then take that information and enter it into a data analysis program. And that gives estimates of trees per acre and basal area per acre and a few other measures of what's out there. Take that information, put it through silviculture guidelines that the forestry scientists have come up with over time. At that time, you make recommendations for what to do with each stand and the forest in general, and the wetlands, and the grasslands. And then those are modified. And then, those are modified to include information about how to manage for specific species. Alright, so that's what's involved in the management plan. And I asked, well, before I was on the planning commission, I asked the council here, well, I'm getting ahead of myself. Here's one stand, that whole Kickery stand, information, the beginning of the information for that stand, how many acres, average tree diameter, how many trees per acre, basal area per acre, I don't want to explain that, soil types, and then what species, from the trees all the way down to the mosses. Everything that we find out there is listed here. And then, for the trees, the stand density of trees per acre and basal area per acre, you have to describe that in order to make these decisions. Okay, silvicultural decisions. And then, with that for each of the different stands, that and a lot of other things like wildlife preservation and other recommendations, you summarize it all up with, this is what we're going to do for each stand in each year over the next twenty years. That's the goal, is to come up with a cookbook almost to say, okay, this year you're going to work on these things, invasive plant control, very first thing, because there's a lot of invasive plants out there, nest boxes, bat houses, food plots, all wildlife improvement projects, permanent openings in some of the areas, and then brush piles for rabbits, install nest boxes, more of that stuff, but also forest harvests and thinnings, if they're appropriate, and if they're part of the goals for the property. So, that's what's involved, and that's how we get to that point. And that's all I wanted to say about that. Alright, what about?
Rick, I've got two questions for you. One regarding cost of this trail, I know I've been in there a number of times with you.
Any trail that we might develop sometime?
Yeah, and you indicated to me that for a relatively low cost, we could make a decent trail. And as far as, as bridges to get across waterways and things like that, there's things that we could do to cut down costs in that. Also the fact that Eagle Scouts is a terrific project for them to get involved with for low-cost labor. And also from the donation from various hardware stores in the area, as far as donating materials, that would help us to break those costs.
Correct. So, Hotwoods Nature Center does a great deal of projects, including trails and bridges and boardwalks and platform, viewing platforms and all kinds of things they're doing all the time. And the majority of them, they have Eagle Scout projects. I asked Mike Manser, the naturalist, he's been working with scouts forever. He's been there since seventy-two, I think. He started the Nature Center. Anyway, and they actually have a board up there with something like forty or fifty different Eagle Scout projects. The board itself was an Eagle Scout project. So anyways, they get a lot of their work done, all of their work done. Oh, not all of it. They get also a lot of work from what they call Wham Crews, prison group. What, jail?
No.
What are they, tell me?
Alternative service.
Okay. Sue works for, with them all the time too. I thought it was Jim Milk. Are you sure?
I am not.
Alright, because I've heard stories from them. Wham Crews, alternative service, keep out of prison, I guess. Okay, so the last thing I want to mention is, the term, the management regime of a wildlife preservation area or wildlife habitat preservation area is, at least in national federal lands, in state land, very rare. And it's something that is only applied to lands that, natural lands, that have either, it's a habitat type that's very much scarce, it's been designated, most places, and there's only a few areas left of them, and that's why they want to protect those areas. Or, as in the case of the New Jersey Pine Lands, that's about, the Pine Lands is about one quarter, no, one-fifth of the entire state of New Jersey. It's amazing. And it has such a large number of, such rare habitats, for one thing, and a large number of threatened and endangered plants and animals, that these areas were set aside and protected. Five hundred and sixty-five thousand acres are protected in, well, this is the Pine Lands National Reserve, which is the first national reserve in the United States. So that number of acres is protected in a protection area, in the core area that needs a higher level of protection, is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand acres. And the reason they have this, oh, and a comprehensive management plan was prepared for these areas, like I was talking about, but far more comprehensive than what we normally would. And this is the reason why it's protected. They have eight hundred and fifty plant species, thirty-nine mammals, two hundred and ninety-nine birds, fifty-nine reptile, child mammal, fifty, and ninety-one fish. Over ninety species of plants and forty-four animal species are threatened or endangered or special concern species. So that's the reason that that is designated, that's kind of like the standard for designating someplace a wildlife preservation area or a habitat preservation area, in this case, oak. Now, our village forest doesn't come anywhere near meeting any of those criteria. I checked with my colleague in our DNR forester that's in charge of the Forest Stewardship Program. Whenever you send in a application for a Forest Stewardship Plan, he checks both the archeological database and threatened and endangered species database. What he found, or the two sections that are not necessarily in our park, but the two sections that include our park, is a flax, furled flax, last observed in nineteen twenty-seven, somewhere around here. A special concern, so they don't know if it's threatened or endangered, it's not determined yet. So it's in both, it was found in both sections. So, do you know about that one, Sue?
Yes.
What's the story of that? Can I ask Sue a question?
No, please don't.
I can, I'm sorry. She's an expert at this. So anyway, that is the only threatened or endangered, in this case, special concern species in our park, or maybe in our park, or was in our park back in nineteen twenty-seven. That's all we got. So, that certainly doesn't rise to the level of a wildlife preservation area. Alright, so the last thing I want to say is, thank you very much for letting me explain these things to you, and so the conversation has been long overdue, and, oh, I started to say, before I was in the, on planning commission, as I said before that, I went to village council meeting like this, because, if you live in the old town, oh, and asked, I said, we need a forest management plan for our village park. And I was told, that's not a village council thing, it's a planning commission thing. Go talk to them. So I did, and we still don't have it. But with all of us working together and hiring, as we should, a natural resource professional, like a forester, consulting forester, biologist, not me, because I'm in the planning, but someone. Together, we should be able to develop a really good, science-based management plan for our village park, because it's jewel of our property.
That's all I wanted to say, thank you very much. Thanks, Rick. Now let's hit a few closing comments here. First, aren't you glad you got more than five minutes?
Couldn't have done it.
Alright, so, and I wanted him to be able to talk without, you know, previous events. Excuse me? I wanted him to be able to talk without having previous events happen to this man in the crowd. But I will finish this out, Mark. The last part of the enchanted forest letter says, let's fast forward to the present. Today's certain members of our village council not only disagree with the development of this trail, but also have taken the extreme measure of deleting all references to it in the village plan. Now, I can only assume they're young, formless guy to represent special interest. In addition, they also want to rename our park Preservation Park with the false notion that this title will forever prevent any future development in our park. Okay? I'm not requesting that the village council approves this on demand, again, we do. And I'm telling you on this, I will pursue you like a dog on a bird on this until we get it. Dan, my latest letter that I might put in for Saturday edition of the paper. Get ready for this one. If a tree fell on the Ortonville Village Park, would anybody hear? Dan, this letter for you, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I want you to understand this. Your house was built in this forest, on forest property. Trees were felled, vegetation cleared away, animals and birds had their homes displaced. Fragile flowers were pulled out by your roots, and very little thought on all these actions were damaging their ecosystem. And your house, a large permanent structure was built on this land solely for your own personal use, and the pleasure to this day remains that way. Do you honestly think that the citizens of this community, walking on designated trails, sitting at a picnic table, enjoying a meal with friends and family, could possibly do any more damage to this forest than you have already done? Now, you want to preserve this, so get this central for a part in your head. You, my friend, do not have selfish right to deny the citizens of this town the use of their own park. What gives you the right to single-handedly determine this park's future for all its citizens? I do not think the founder did it this way. Thank you.
So I have a question.
Could I be heard?
Oh yeah.
Thank you.
You made your point there.
Thank you.
You know, and I bring this up all the time, why does everything fall back on the village residents, you know, for all the cost? You say little to no cost, I don't see, hear any cost analysis based on any of this. That's been a big concern for many, many people, is how much cost is it going to bring on the village residents? I mean, how come nobody has brought this up, like I spoke with Mrs. May on back there earlier today, how come nobody has brought this up for township, for the whole entire township to eat the cost on this? Would have got a lot better off than just the village residents. I spoke with you, Mr. Sutton, you mentioned that before as well, you know? And so, that's one of my other, one of my concerns. The other concern is, like Lieutenant Glover spoke of, he says, cost, you know, for special equipment, and for the fire department, what kind of cost is there that's going to come, you know, for the fire department and the police department, for special equipment to be able to get back in there in case that there's an emergency in that? I mean, all these are questions that need to be asked, you know? And then, to do a trail system back there, you have to build bridges, a DNR approval, special bridges, you know, what kind of cost comes with that, you know? I don't hear anybody say anything about cost, it's just that they want to do it, you know, other than falling back on the village residents, so I have issues with that, you know? So, I, nobody walks around this village probably any more than I do. I see Mr. Sutton a few, I see Mr. Sutton quite a bit out there. But I walk anywhere for eight to twelve miles a day around this village, you know, two to three times a day. I walk, I hike, I love the trail system and everything. And we're not saying anybody can't use the trail system, that's, you know, I mean, it's actually when the council make decisions, I mean, it's there, it's available for anybody to use, to walk on. So nobody's ever said that nobody can use that park, you know? So, I mean, I just get upset because I think people twist around things and everything else, and, you know, as far as what it's called and that, it just, making sure that people, you know, have access to it, you know? Just, like I said, cost and everything else comes involved, I mean, I just want people to realize. And then, what are you going to do as far as servicing that down the road, you know? What kind of cost do you expect that to happen, you know? I feel attacked here, because you're looking this way and everything, Pat, and I never sit there in person, you know?
Yeah, you may address your cost issue regarding fire and police protection, so people right now can go into that park. Lieutenant Glover, if you had a situation where you had to go into that park now, because it's open to the public, what do you do? And why would this be any more expensive to your people than what they're currently doing? I say the same thing to you, Chief Quoap, is if rescue or whatever had to get into that park, it's open to the public right now, what additional cost do you have if you had an organized trail system in there? Any? I don't see it.
It depends on the nature of the injury or the accident, what happened, I mean.
What's going to happen?
I mean, sooner or later, something, I mean, for almost any trail system that we have, and I'll use Rochester Hills as an example, that's a massive trail system. And ATVs are probably the main thing. You can't drive a fire truck back to go forty-seven acre swamp. You have to have some type of a full driver ATV to get back to that location to bring somebody out. I don't know what type of hikes you've ever, but I've moved bodies long distances, and that's not an easy task, especially if it's life or death situation.
Lieutenant Glover, do you think it's any easier to get somebody out of there now than it would be if you had a trail in there?
Yes, it'd probably be easier with a trail.
It would be easier with a trail?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, that's all I'm getting. So it's not going to be any additional cost, if anything, it's going to be easier.
I wouldn't say it wouldn't be an additional cost, because we do not have an ATV at the substation and nor does the fire department.
And that's all I say.
But would it be easier? Absolutely.
That's all I say to you, Chief Quoap.
No, and I'll reemphasize exactly what Lieutenant Glover said, is we have the same issue. If we need to get in there and get somebody out, for whatever the reason, if they slip, fall, break, leg, hip, whatever the case may be, we've got to be able to get them out. Walking them out is not going to be an option. So then what we have to do is we have to put them on some kind of a sled device, and we'll have to hike them out. And that's going to depend on where they're located and how long that's going to take us to get them out to the proper care. And to Lieutenant Glover's point, it can all be done. The cost would be some kind of an ATV that both fire and police could share, so that we have access. If it's a police situation, we can get back there, if it's a fire situation, medical situation, then we could get back in there with that as well. So that is the cost, and that's what was brought up when the township was talking about doing a park system or doing a trail system with the Ironbelt Trail, was how are we going to get access to those trails to get people off those trails and get them to the proper medical care? Now, if you put a path system on there, that's why I know that we can get a, you know, like a pickup truck or something like that, well, we have that capability, absolutely. So, okay, thank you.
Well, we have both of you up there to ask a quick question. How do you handle situations in the Ortonville State Recreation Area?
Larry, I'm really glad you asked that, because we've had this conversation. And there's trail systems up there as well. We did have an individual at one time that was way back in the fire, we had a hard time trying to locate where she was at, so we ended up calling for mutual aid for an ATV that had a track system. And the reason we asked for that ATV specifically is because there was ice in different parts. It was during early spring, where the snow had melted with the sun and had refroze. So trying to get footing and trying to get back into the, into the different hills back in there and navigate that ended up being a real, was a real concern. And our real concern was it was going to take us a long time to properly extricate that individual out. We were with a track system on an ATV, drove right in, loaded her up on the cot, drove her right out, got her onto Sand Road, and we were able to transport her to the hospital where she did have a broken leg. So, there is a cost, but that's how we would do it. Right now, we'll either call for mutual aid for the same device, or we'll have to hike somebody out.
We had similar situations this year with a gentleman that was mentally challenged, and he walked away from his home, and we found him back in behind Belen Elementary School in the actual middle of the swamp, under the water. The guy was almost a three-hundred-pound individual, and it took about fifteen of us to remove him from there and get him out, or if we'd had an ATV, it would have been a lot easier. And unfortunately for him, he was deceased, but if that person would have still been alive, you know, that's a long time to get somebody out of. somebody out of there.
Lieutenant Glover, have you had any reason to respond to any reports in this particular park we're talking about within the last so many years?
No. And I've lived out here my whole life, and I worked out here as a patrolman back in the late 90s. I don't ever remember getting a call back in there. I mean, we've had calls such, you know, for hunting, you know, where people think there's hunting violations going on. We have had those, but we've never had anything out of the ordinary back there ever. And, no.
And the only issue that we've ever had is to actually go in there when there was a haunted forest to get people out.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Did anybody else, and tell us, we'll have your questions, okay?
So, you know, it's unfortunate that certain trustees have to make it personal. This is not a personal thing for me. I'd like to remind everyone about a year ago, this council as a whole decided to regulate the use of the park. Not restricted, it's open to the public. It's a rustic hiking, open to the public area. Since then, since that designation, there's been widespread abuse. White cedar trees, barks being peeled off. If anybody knows about a white cedar, it can be very easily carved and peeled off in sheets, all right? You go back into the woods there and you can see evidence of that abuse. I would say probably four or five months after the designation, somebody went back in there with chainsaws. They went and cut live cedar trees that I would estimate to be 40, 50, if not older, and built and constructed ramps and a trail system to be used either for a bicycle and/or motorcycles, right? I shared the photos with the citizen, I shared the photos, they presented them to the public. So way back, even way back when, the public was made aware of the 47 acre parcel. Since then, I've hiked there many times. I do live adjacent to that piece of property. And not, it was only one week ago today, there was clear evidence of continued motorcycle riding back there, all right? It's obvious on what a motorcycle tire looks like. It looked, it's obvious when a rear tire spins out, what it leaves behind, and that continues to go on today. On a regular basis, no. All right? So almost a year ago, I did motion to designate the 47 acres to be the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, all right? This council as a whole approved that designation. And with that designation, I'll read for you what at that time the village council approved. With this designation, this means not to be used for off-road vehicles, motorbikes, or developed bike or footpath trails, hunting, or any other than to preserve, support, and protect the habitat and wildlife of this property. It doesn't mean you can't go back there. If anybody's a natural hiker, hiker, they can go back there and hike at will, all right? By opening this up to the public, okay, there are many things that could happen, both good and bad, right? So what happened was after I went for a hike and saw the evidence of the motorcycles being run back there, I said, wait a minute, we have a designation so that no motorcycles can be run back there. When this designation was approved by council as a whole, it was my understanding that we made it an ordinance for the use, specific land use for that property. I went back to the village and tried to dig up the records, and there was no record of an ordinance of any kind. And if I remember, at that time, our law enforcement said they need an ordinance of some type to enforce it. So if someone's doing something illegal back there, how can they reference whether they're doing something legal if they have nothing to reference it to? It's what specific land use is there for. So unbeknownst to me, that resolution, motion, approved, was shoved in someone's drawer and nothing was done to it, all right? So I'm here tonight to, again, make sure that there's a designation, to protect the current condition of the park, not to restrict it for public use, keep it a natural hiking area, and to basically respect the wetlands in which I didn't hear anything about. These are Class II wetlands back there, and there's a lot of them, all right? Make no mistake about it. And there is, it is beautiful back there. I encourage anybody, there's access off of Mill Street, there's access off of South Street, there's access. It is not developed. It means you've got to put some hiking boots on, maybe some rubber boots in that case if you end up going summer. But it is open to the public, so in no way are we restricting this from the public. And a year ago, we made the same comments, and it was published in the paper, and it's unfortunate, 50% of people heard it, 50% of people didn't. You know, I mean, not everybody reads a citizen. Thank goodness. So anyways, it's tonight that I would like to make a motion to put this resolution that we approved almost a year ago into an ordinance such that our residents understand the current approved use of that property.
I would be okay with that, trustee Ashman, as long as you don't vote with a conflict of interest. I'm going to vote. I'm making a strong objection on trustee Ashman being allowed to vote because of a direct conflict of interest.
I would have to agree with that because every time that the subject of this park comes up, you get very emotional. You had even tried during master workshops to remove all the public input on that specific piece of property and no other public input, because you said they can't put dots on that park because it's not allowed. And I, anybody who feels that strongly about it, I think that according to our own conflict of interest policy, where states you cannot, you know, object it and consider it or a topic, then you should be removing yourself from the discussion as conflict of interest. That is our village policy.
So for the record, I do not operate as a single sole person in this council. We operate as a whole, all right? And never once have I designated myself, enforced myself like trustee George and now you trustee Hayden are going here tonight. I've never forced myself on it and have openly discussed things in an open, fair manner. And council as a whole made a decision, all right? There was no personal attacks, there was just general topic. What's more important for this village? To correct and fix the infrastructure that's just failing miserably, roads we have no money for. We have power lines going through the village that are just idiots to see, right? But yet we still decide, okay, as a whole, we decided, okay, yeah, trails are good, but is that, is that a priority over taking care of the infrastructure that's needed? Drains in Crossman Park, we need drains so bad it's unbelievable. But yet people decide to bury their head in the sand about the cost of this for trails, right? Bottom line is, you need vehicles. Public safety's number one. First and foremost, you've got to have the vehicles that get in and out of there, fire, police, and even DPW. Once you have that trail back there, it's going to take extra manpower. I've cleaned beer bottles, liquor bottles, fire pits back there. If anybody knows anything about cedar trees, they carry so much oxygen, it doesn't take but a small spark to light a cedar tree. And I guarantee you, that forest will go up in smoke. It's very volatile, all right?
So trustee Ashman, as far as my personal attack upon you, so you don't do that with other people such as the planning commission members that we had last week. You don't think that was a personal attack on you?
Absolutely not. And I think if you listen to the video.
Although I can, I did. I was present for what had happened, and I found it probable.
All right, so let's focus back on the discussion.
That's right.
I want to let trustee Ashman finish, and if there's anything else that you'd like to add, then we can ask questions if we have any of you to kind of keep it exactly the same format.
I don't have any questions. I made a motion.
No, I mean, did you, did you have anything else you wanted to share with us before we asked questions? It's almost like we did a chat, had shared information, asked questions.
Can I get your official motion ready, please, so it doesn't get anything wrong?
Sure.
So you made a motion? I thought you read the motion from, you read the information from, you are making a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay.
Could you restate it?
You said you were reading what you wrote before. I'm sorry.
So there was two things I did.
All right, can you please read that?
The original motion that this council as a whole approved almost a year ago, I read, all right? And this is specific to designating the 47 acres at the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park. I read from that specific motion for everybody's education as to what took place. My motion tonight was to make that resolution on that plant, on that property designation as an ordinance to the identical reading of what was in that original motion. So yes, I did make a motion, and I'll support that motion.
I do have a question. So the cost, and I agree, we've never said that nobody could go back there and walk, but we do know that there is, for lack of a better word, quick sand.
Sinkholes.
Quick sand.
Sinkholes, bro.
Where, you know, sinking can go on. It's like, so, you know, the public for hiking is more than welcome to go back there. How much of the property, I don't have the survey because one of the gentlemen said tonight, most of it is swamp. I don't know if that to be true or not true. So if it is swamp, then it would certainly have to be protected. We certainly can't have kids going back there, you know, drowning in quicksand. So at no time was it to exclude the public from the use of that. But as far as cost, it's, you know, I've seen on breaks of presentation about bat houses, bat houses could still go in there in today's environment, a bat house, right? So some of those other things, they could still go in there. So wouldn't it be possible to still keep it the wildlife preservation park? Or we could still incorporate bat house, right? That's natural. We still have the planting that's still there, so that's, we could protect. So that's all about just protecting our jewel there. I mean, I don't know, maybe we need to explore the cost of the equipment, but I think we first need to realize how much of that property is swamp. That it wouldn't even be doable to ride an ATV through there. I don't know. How do we segregate that? And then still protecting the safety of the children from the schoolyard, that is certainly a concern as well. So maybe we need to check out that.
So right now, we have nothing to enforce the designation so people can go back there?
And it's current format. We don't have an ordinance to.
That's right.
So if somebody's riding a motorcycle, they're not allowed to. We don't have that in place today.
That's fine, we're just going to go ahead and finish, because we'll come on down the line, because I'll make sure us to share the text at some time.
That property is open. We could go there right now. Anybody in this room can walk over there. Like Dan said, put your hiking boots on. As far as a trail goes at some point, maybe at some point down the road, maybe, but right now, tonight, anybody can go there. We can all go there. I think when Boy Scouts were brought up and just Boy Scouts, Eagle Scouts, that's one area that, that you had mentioned, that's a gem. It certainly is, it's a gem of a property because it's pretty much un, it's not developed. It's like, that's about as rustic as you can get. And if you're walking in there like I have and some of us have, you can't even hear track, you can't hear anything. You are, that's what nature is kind of all about. It's a nice place to be, and there's no restriction to it except motorbikes and things like that. So I, as long as it's open, I'm really good with that. I don't know about trails, you know, the footpaths or whatever, but right now, things can go on bad, can go on badly, and there's no, there's not an ordinance to support the police to go and find somebody. Should they have to get back there? So I'm going to stick with supporting the motion because it is open. It's not arm-wired off that I'm using. That's all I've got.
Okay. First of all, I've heard several people in this council state that, oh, this property is open to everybody. Yes, it's open to everybody, but unfortunately, the only easy access is by people who are immediate property owners around there because they are the ones who have blazed trails into the park from the backs of their property. When we did the survey of the park and we walked around through that park, we followed all these various trails that are in the park already that were blazed by these property owners, the very same ones that apparently are riding motorbikes through and setting fires. The people who are the property owners around there are the ones who are abusing this property. So who are we trying to protect this from? All the rest of the residents that don't own property around there? I don't get that. I don't think it's right that the only easy access to this gem of the property in our community is by the property owners immediately around it. Because for me, as a public person, if I don't go across some of these properties, I have to climb halfway up the hill to a public access place, push through some bushes, scramble up a little hill before I can get to those trails that the property owners have blazed through there. That's number one. If we are really saying that this is open to public, we need to have a public entrance where people can get into the access it easily and safely, not just have it only easily and safely accessible by the property owners immediately around it. When it comes to the trails on there, I keep hearing, and people say there's already existing trails, we don't need to put trails in. But if we're concerned about sensitive wildlife and sensitive vegetation, shouldn't it make sense that we have designated marked trails and we keep people on those trails so they don't wander into those sensitive areas? But when I suggested that, I was told, no, we don't need any markings, we don't need anything. People will see where to go. I don't think that that's the way most nature preserves are run. I think that they have designated marked trails, and the rules generally state you need to stay on the marked designated trails. This is what I've seen when I've been at nature preserves and other parks where they have wildlife and habitat. I think that, I don't think that we need to make a big rush to move and put this into an ordinance because this property is already belonging to the village. If people are doing inappropriate activities on there, we can enforce it. There's no need to have a special ordinance. We just call and say, look, there's people that are running bikes.
We can't enforce it if we don't have, if it's just in our meeting.
That's what Lieutenant Glover has said.
That's why.
I was just going to say, would you mind stopping us? Can you explain to us what you can and can't enforce if there is a resolution versus ordinance?
Well, if there's, we spoke about this last year because of motorcycling, cutting of trees and things like that. It's like if you own a piece of property that you don't want people trespassing on it. If you don't advise them or post it, I can't enforce it. You don't have anything marked or designated therefore right now for me to enforce. So if you call and say there's a motorcycle in there running around or somebody's cutting trees, I can't enforce that. There's no law that the motor vehicle code has adopted for me to enforce it. You have a bunch of local ordinances that we enforce now, but that's because the motor vehicle code has adopted those. They're in law. I can't enforce something that there isn't. Thank you.
So if we have the posted rules and regulations of a property, does there have to be a specific ordinance for that property, or would that be the same ordinances for any of the parks and recreation in our area that we always have ordinances for?
You would need something specifically for that piece of property. And we talked about it length last year. I remember, Dan, we talked about it quite a bit. You know, somebody going back there, removing trees, you know, if you have an ordinance called fires back there, whatever you decide that you want enforced, it has to be a local ordinance, and then we can enforce it. Unfortunately, right now, something went out there. We could ask them to stop, but I can't enforce it. They tell me we'll jump in the lake, we'd have to leave because there is nothing for me to do.
So the fact that you cannot cut down trees on public property that is not yours, that's just, that's in ordinance we already have. We have to specify it in the power pulse?
Not if you already have that local, already have that ordinance. But there are ordinances that came, that the issues that were going on in there last year that were talked about that you do not have specific ordinances about. And just like Dan said, last year, I had assumed also that that went to the village council on a couple of those ordinances because it was talked to them at length. I wasn't even aware that they weren't there. But at the same point, we have not been called there. All these instances that have been going on that I'm hearing about tonight, we have never been contacted one time. However, if we would have been, we could have asked them to stop. If they want to stop, that's on them. But I can't go out and enforce it right of civil fraction or on this to be taken.
Madam President, if I might just add, any of the ordinances of the village that would apply to an activity on that property or any other property can be enforced either by the sheriff or by the village itself as it applies to that property. What I think part of what Lieutenant is saying is that if you do not have, you don't regulate something, you can't. something, you can't do something about it just because you don't like it. So, if we have cited something, or if somebody wants to have some provision, it can have an effect on more than one property. It doesn't have to be specific to that one. If you're looking at the overall use and of that particular property, then you can do something that includes what those, what the parameters of that are, but that's a separate issue.
Correct. Okay. Okay. Well, then, I would also say that I would also like to know before the resolution was made, because I was not on council at the time, that the council adopted this, and I believe it was not even a full council on the night that that happened. But how much research and facts and information did you bring before the council to support the designation of a wildlife preservation park? Did you have any evidence or supporting documentation or surveys that were done before deciding to make that designation put apart?
I did quite a bit of research before I brought it to council, and at that time, I don't have information.
Was that at the council meeting?
But I got to tell you, the abuse of alcohol drinking, bonfires back there, motorcycles back there, I did enough research of carrying the trash and actually removing physical structures back there that were kind of put in the citizen for our knowledge about the abuse that's been going back there. You go back there, and it is pristine, but when you walk back by a section where the park is completely stripped off, these 50, 60-year-old trees, it's sickening. It really is. I pulled sleeping bags under there. So, that's the research, that's the research I've done. Bottom line is, we want people to go in there, enjoy it, a rustic hiking, nature preserve, but what, from a development standpoint, council as a whole? I didn't choose that. It was council as a whole, it was a majority, it's a motion, all right? And motion prevailed. Bottom line, so...
It was a motion, Dan, so you crafted a motion.
That's our job up here. We craft motions every month.
You keep saying it was a council, but you were the driving force behind that motion, from what I understand.
Any one of us could have crafted that same motion.
Okay. So, anyways, to continue on, we talked about the cost, so run over. And from what I'm hearing, it sounds like even though we have Ortonville State Recreation Area and we have had this park here for many years, there really has been very few runs that have required any special assistance. I heard the chief say there was one out there in the Ortonville State Recreation a few years back, there was a recent one where it was difficult to get the body removed. There's not been any calls to the knowledge recently for within the park. I don't see that there's really a significant cost yet to worry about. I would say that if something happened, we would probably have to use a mutual, right? There would be a cost incurred at that time, but I don't think it's something that would be a significant factor to consider upfront before we consider putting a trail in there or opening up to make better public access. I would also say, when people keep talking about costs over and over, and I would invite everybody here to see whether they agree with this statement or not, but what does our government here operate under? Taxpayer dollars, the residents' taxpayer dollars. And if the residents are coming to us and saying, we would like to see trails put into this community park so that we can enjoy that park and be able to access it safely, and I think this is a key factor, safely. Right now, you walk through there, there's swamp areas where you can get stuff, there's these streams that are really pretty streams that have, what do you, how do you get across them now? You gotta either scramble through them, or there's some rickety old board, or maybe a fallen log. Why not have some minimal improvements to those pathways to make them safe access for people on that? I think that would probably prevent some of the potential injuries that the police department are concerned about. And as I said, taxpayer dollars, if they're paying the tax money to our government and they say they want to put trails down, I don't see why we can't spend the taxpayer dollars to put trails in for our residents.
Have you spoke with the DNR to find out what it would take, you know, to satisfy the DNR to build a couple of bridges to get through, like over here at the corner of the post office? Yeah, the post office, that would be probably one of the better accesses?
Well, what I've been heard over and over is that, well, there's plenty of existing trails in there, and I've walked in there too on a number of occasions. And like I said, there's some small rivulets where just a small, flat wooden structure just across that little short span of creek would make it so much safer.
But you have to get an approval from the DNR, and you have to build a certain type of structure. I own property in the U.P., and I can't just put it across the river that I own. I can't just put like a logway.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about putting a bridge across here, so I'm talking about within there where we already have the existing trails that we've talked about, and where we have currently some rickety old boards or a fallen log, that's the pathway across that little rivulet that's running down there, okay? I've been told over and over, we don't need to put in formal trails because there's already trails in there. I agree, there's trails in there. We need to mark and designate them to help keep people on the right areas where it's safe for them to walk. I think we do need an entrance, and I think it could be done without crossing the creek. Where some people already, like myself, have been there, where we scramble up the hill, we could probably put some nice little natural-looking wooden steps in there and clear a little bit of an open.
Are you talking about at the time? Are you talking like down the corner?
I'm talking about up on Hill Street. Yeah. There's a few places where we could potentially put some access in there where we not have to cross any streams or creek that we've never crossed.
Parking too.
If you're going in there, in here to hike in that property, we've got parking in town, you can park in town and walk the municipal parking lot, it's one block. It's, we, there's things we could do to make that much more accessible to the public at a very minimal cost. And besides the Eagle Scouts and Boy Scouts, we also have honor students that need community service hours, we could open that up to them and say, hey, what would you be willing to do? I've heard suggestions that we should at least map out the existing trails in there and potentially mark them so that we know what's in there and where it's safe to walk. Because if we're talking about preserving the habitat, it's important to keep people out of that sensitive habitat. And right now, no trails marked, nothing marked, it's basically, hey, yeah, it's open, go in there, wander wherever you want. And I think that we should have some rules. We should have some formally designated marked trails so people stay on those trails and protect those areas. That would be a better way to protect it than just by doing nothing, in my opinion. And I think we should involve the DNR or the North Oakland Headwaters Conservancy, or I passed out another flyer that to everybody from the Southeast American Land Conservancy Group. There's resources out there, groups out there that we could call upon to help us craft a plan to manage that effectively and open up for better public access. And that's, and I think we should listen to the voice of our community, and we should, of course, we all want to protect and preserve that piece of property in its natural state, but I think we also need to open it up and provide better opportunity for the rest of residents to get access to it, not just the property owners immediately around it. And that's, I'm going to end there.
Thank you. So, we've heard a lot of discussion on whether we can walk or can't walk in the property. And I'm hearing from naturalists and professionals that have walked the property that you can walk, I'm hearing from residents that you can walk, I'm hearing from residents that you can't walk. We can't make decisions on who should or shouldn't and how they should be walking in there until maybe we have the correct information on that. I'm also hearing questions on whether we want it to be a preserved or a party area. I think there's a happy medium in between, and by locking everybody out does not prevent partying. You can party in the school parking lot, you can party at the state recreation spot. That's not the answer to stop part of an issue is to completely lock it down for everybody. I'm hearing there's access to it, but nobody knows where to access it. There's trails, but we can't develop the trails, but we can develop them by putting this over there or not taking that up. We can't be inconsistent and make these decisions. So, what we have is a bunch of different opinions on what to do with a piece of property, and immediate fear of educating ourselves on what to do with this property and locking it down. So, my personal opinion is, we research the information first, which is what's being asked from that, is to see, is it possible? How is it possible? What is possible? Then take it from there. You don't know a cost till you research, where would a trail go? Would there a trail go? Couldn't it be on this end? Could it be on that end? Yes, those are vague statements because this is a vague discussion. Nobody has the answers until we have somebody look through it who is professional and knows what they're talking about, and those that have walked through it that we do know that are professional naturalists say it can be done. So, let's research it and see, hey, what can be done? Can it be done? What is that going to cost us? Let's look at that. Then let's evaluate with educated decisions, not things based on fear. Our residents have said this is what their interest in us doing. Let's do it and see what that comes to. We may say it doesn't work for us, and that's not an option, but let's find out the correct information first, not make it without a fan in mind. Definitely real quick. We do have a letter that was turned in from a resident that is unable to attend, and so I'd like to read that for her too as well. "I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting due to conflict with a previous commitment. I've lived in the village for over 25 years. I raised my family here. I do know that this parcel of land is known as the Ortonville Village Park. I didn't know it even existed until I went to open house meetings for the master plan. I do a lot of walking through the village. I've tried to find out how to access this park, but I've not had a lot of success to find a walking area. What I did notice is there are several homes that have this property at the edge of their personal property. I noticed a fire pit and some items stored on the parkland. I wondered if some of the residents felt it was okay to use this as their own property. Our village planning committee has listened to the community, and we got a plan for ways to make this village park accessible for the community to enjoy. And now our village council is considering a vote to rename the park and block any such changes. I question why we have a master plan if our council does not follow it. I question why we have a planning committee if our village council refuses to listen to their suggestions. I question why we come here believing our voices will be heard. But most of all, I question who is this council serving? Respectfully, Linda Brooks." So, do we have any further questions or discussions?
I just like to say something. I'm not sure where the information came from that we were renaming it. There's been no mention about renaming it. It's been Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park since, since, well, we technically did that motion a year ago, I guess, but we have no intention of renaming it. And in the master plan, it wasn't to delete the information from there, it was about making sure that the master plan contained the correct information because it was titled and labeled incorrectly. So, those are just two points. But I think since we do have a motion on the table, I think that we, as it stands right now, I think we need to put something in place to be able to enforce what we do have, and then perhaps make the subcommittee or committee to explore access points. I do think that this park was part of the overall park keep, the park wayfinding, where we were going to put a sign there and have it labeled. So, I don't think that there was any intent to not put proper signage there. That's all part of the signage, the wayfinding committee that's just began. So, I do think with that. But I think we simply do have the motion on the table, I think we need to call for a vote on that, handle it as it states in today's environment, and then perhaps look at, okay, we need an access point, how could people get into it without trespassing on some of these property, and to look at that. But that's separate from what the motion is currently on the table.
And part of that, just because, and we did discuss as a council, different signs for different entry points, one on Hill Street and one by the post office. That was discussed, and that, as soon as the wayfinding committee, the sign committee is finding subsigns, those were to be posted there as entry points. You know, there's others.
There's never been a time not to label or not to identify it.
So, on that note, Matt Jenkins, could you please make sure...
I'd like to enter this.
Well, I mean, from the DDA standpoint, when they go to do an assessment of our signs and everything, could they please also include that into, you know, the research?
You and the wayfinding committee will be working with the consultant.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on this?
My only comment is when we vote, I strongly object to trustee S. that voting the conference of interest.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Madam President, when you take a vote, I suppose you will vote all the way.
Could we reread one more time, or could you read it out?
Dan would be happy to, because he's going to be...
I guess I can confirm if you can.
So, the motion that's put in place is nothing more than enforce what council previously approved, and I'll reread it again. The motion is to designate the property identification tax ID 0-18-226-002 for the 47.32 acres of village park, the Ortonville Wildlife Designate, or Wildlife Preservation Park. This means not to be used for off-road vehicles, motorbikes, or developed bike or footpath trails, hunting, or any other use other than to preserve, support, and protect the habitat and wildlife of this property. I would like to make that an ordinance for that tax ID number.
And my last thought on that is, we did suggest that that might be an idea, and after that point, we then asked feedback from the residents. We have had kickback from the residents for that year and a half, and again, we have polled them, they have not agreed with that. We have also polled our DDA planning commission and village council, and they also are entrusted in seeing an actual entrance and development of that. So, with that, I have a deep concern, continuing with something that we have been told time and time again through feedback, that it might be time to put the brakes on and start fresh.
Yeah, that would be a question. With the current wording of your ordinance, Dan, in your opinion, pre-event, any trails could be equipped with a landmark?
The trails are, the trails are in there.
I'm talking about, well, we do not have an entrance, so...
An access point where a signage to show the access point is lined, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about. It's going to be hoping about signage for access points.
Yeah, but what about just availability? Because we don't have to use the access point.
I think to the...
There is. We just choose a line. All you got to do is walk 60 paces downhill, and it's flat and even, right down the property.
You don't have to push through bushes to get there.
You don't need stairs, you don't need anything, there's a spot.
What is definition of development? How do we, I mean, these are broad terms. How do we decide that if we're creating a motion, what is our parameters here?
If I can say, so, we all know that council, we can amend, we can rescind, we can withdraw, we can do any of those things. So, even though the ordinance, as it's, as the park is in place right now with access, until further things are explored, a conservancy is explored, it's to prevent any illegal activity going back there, it's to make sure that there's safety and all that sort of thing. So, even doing this ordinance is not going to prevent something if we go later on down the line to say, you know what, we want to put a bridge over something. That's another vote, that's another topic, that's another investigation, but right now, the ordinance would be to simply put something in place on what the park is today, as it stands today. And as we evolve and we talk to conservancy, or we talk to forestry personnel or whatever it may be, and if it goes, if it evolves to that point, we can explore it at that time. But right now, it's to enforce motorcycles, ATVs being back there.
My concern is with the explicit inclusion of footpaths in that list. I would be okay with it if it did not explicitly include footpaths. I would be okay if it said, we take it, and no paved footpath trails, because I agree, I don't think that a paved trail is appropriate. But I think primitive rustic trails are appropriate. And I don't want to see this ordinance eliminate the possibility of rustic trails because it states...
But again, it wouldn't be because we have the power to amend that ordinance. So, you know, we sit there, the subcommittee swamps or whatever, right? We sit there and say, you know what, this is not going to be developed now. We have an ordinance in place, we just amend the ordinance, and we remove footpaths and we insert, that's always the possibility.
If the main concern right now is with the motorbikes and all that stuff, why not leave footpath out of it for now?
You're spending money now to develop an ordinance, that's not one that we change it, that you already know you want to change.
We're specifically...
There's no money to do that.
We don't need lawyers.
We're paying per hour, it is our money to develop this. So, we're going to...
So we're going to rush to develop something that we know we're going to change, or are we going to do it correctly, properly, and first educate ourselves?
I would be okay with it if we took the footpath line, if we left everything else other than footpath in there, I would be okay with that. Because I agree, we don't, it's not appropriate for motorbikes and all those other. But I think footpath goes too far. I think we should take that piece out, and I would be okay with it.
The motion, the amendment is supported there. Thank you.
I make the motion to amend the ordinance. The motion to strike footpath from the list of excluded activities.
Bicycle.
We got to take care of the first order. The more motions out there, we got to vote on the first motion. I thought we're amending.
The rabbit's rules order.
I thought we're amending.
Any order of the order of the amendment? Look it up.
Well, if there's, if there's an amendment to the motion, support it. You would vote on the amendment, and then the motion, if it passes, the original motion is amended.
We have a support of the first motion.
But it can be amended.
I made a motion to amend the first.
The amendment.
Just what, you couple of bystanders?
I'm comfortable with bystanders. If that terrain is not really appropriate to too much other than.
Madam President, is there support for the amendment?
I was just asking to clarify his amendment before.
There was.
Trustee George supports it.
Okay. Because you can't discuss.
So the amendment is?
To remove footpath from the excluded, from the explicitly excluded use of.
And I would question things like park benches and picnic tables and things like that. Are they going to be allowed?
Is it a draw set at all?
No. Motion's clear right now.
So the answer is, want to make sure the people over there? No. No, they're not. So you can't sit down.
It's part of development.
Yeah, I see. There's another Ramrod thing coming through here.
Does it say anything about, picnic tables, or does it say anything about? It just says about you, or how would it cover that?
Read the part from this meeting.
The motion was to designate tax ID number zero three dash eighteen dash two two six dash zero zero two or the 47.32 acres village park as the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park. This means not to be used for any off-road vehicles, motorbikes, or developed bike or footpaths, trails, hunting, or any other, or any other than to preserve, support, and protect the habitat and wildlife of this property.
So any other would exclude basically any use whatsoever.
It's allowed for hiking. That's what it's designated for, rustic hiking.
According to the way that's worded right there, I would have.
We have amended motion.
Yeah, and we're discussing. The way that you have that worded there, it says, or any other use other than preserving the habitat, which means you can't do anything with that. You can't even go walk there or anything else according to the way it's worded. That's the way I would interpret it.
Everything else is excluded.
Read the very last piece on that, or any other use.
I've read it three times now, Larry. The motion's there. There's amended, amendment on that motion. Right now, Madam President, I think you should restrict the discussion to the amendment to the motion, because that's what's been forward from village council. And when we have a vote on that, then you would go to what, what the motion says and how it provides in its plain language is what it does. To say, are there other inferences to this, I think is going beyond what you have before you. Not that that's not legitimate discussion, but it's not what's on the table.
Well, the concern is when it's not in front of us, and we haven't had a chance to research it, and it's thrown at you, and people don't have it in front to read, that's why you need to have somebody keep reading it for you to catch what it says. So I know that's why Larry asked.
I'm just trying to point out that when the motion is what it is, and the way you express your pleasure or displeasure, if you don't agree with it, you vote against it. If you're for it, you vote for it. If, if we get to the point of creating an ordinance, there's going to be a lot of questions. If I'm the one that's preparing the draft of it, I'm going to have other questions of what to put into it. The present, all that direction that we're getting is what's in the motion. And that's, I mean, that happens often. But it will take for the discussion, depending on how this works out.
Thank you. Any further discussions on the amended motion? Are we ready for a vote? All right.
On the amended motion, Robinson?
No.
Skoraka?
This was amended by.
Here, are you right?
This is to remove footpath?
No. Bryce?
No.
Botsu?
No.
Ashman?
No.
George?
No.
Hayden?
This is the motion to amend the motion?
Yes.
Well, I'd say yes.
Motion clear.
So now we're ready to go back to the original motion. Motion on the table by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Botsu. We have any other questions on the motion, original motion? Okay. Are we ready for a vote? Can we have a roll call vote, please, Liz?
Hayden?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skoraka?
Yes.
Bryce?
No.
Botsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
No.
Motion carries four and three. Now, that being said, so the wayfinding committee is going to take care of signage for entrance to the park.
With the offer that was made by the DDA for an outside to come in and make a suggestion for the signage and all that for the park, I'm going to make sure that I get with Matt Bailey, because he's the one that has a connection with this group that's going to come on to do this, so.
And we just suggested, council, that the wayfinding committee is going to have a very peripheral effect on what's being done with this, because this is use of the park.
Right, and I was just asking for a second.
Yeah, and the signage would be a separation. The first charge that we have to deal with is to develop an ordinance that embodies what was in the motion. And that I'll work on right away.
Okay. I'll be in communication with you and also.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Next up is the village Christmas tree replacement purchase.
As I've indicated to you in a memo, the tree that is at the corner by the Old Town Hall is getting in progressively worse condition with a lot of bare spots and a lot of dead branches in it. And Bob and I have looked at this, and we've determined that because of some disease of tree, and others that it, we need to replace. We need to, because we've tried to do things to keep its appearance decent and haven't been able to do that, we received a quote to replace the tree with a 20-foot Norway spruce for $2,500 from Advanced Tree Moving. This is a specimen tree in excellent condition, and that is the total cost to plant the tree. However, there is additional expense or activity from the village's standpoint. Our staff would care down the old tree, move the necessary bricks, and once the tree is planted, our staff would put in guy wires on the tree, install dead man anchors on it, and that, the total of this is going to take about three and a half days of process. We'd like to, if council approves this, this tree is available, and we'd like to get it in right away so that we can use it for decorations for the season. And I have suggested a motion to you. Do you have to answer any questions?
I do have a question. Does this tree come with any kind of a warranty, guarantee, or anything? I mean, sometimes you'll at least get a year or so.
I, let me, let me take a look at the proposal. I thought that there was some limit. I think it's like one growing season. Does that include hanging Christmas lights on it? The very first year? Oh, we can do that. Yeah. Now, this. I don't see anything on the proposal that talks about, but typically with any kind of a tree company, there is a one growing season year and a half.
Do we, or can we get any other bids? This is just the one that, you know, is there another?
We could.
I mean, I don't know what, how much a 20-foot Norway would cost, but just to get another estimate?
We could. It's Bob's opinion and mine that this is in the area of a typical cost for this kind of tree, particularly when you're talking about a nursery grown and maintained tree up to this point, because they have to be trimmed and everything done to them as they're growing, to make sure that they're, and this is what this tree has been.
To keep it manageable.
Yes. So my concern with the Norway, soft needles, great for the guys putting lights in there, but the branches aren't as stout as like a blue spruce would be. Certainly, blue spruce is very picky, you know, not very pleasurable to put lights into it. My concern would be overloading the amount, with the amount of light we put in there, would that be an overload on a spruce versus a Norway, or a blue spruce or whatever? You know, it's, I'm just making sure, if we're going to buy this tree, is it the right tree to be hanging lights on? That's what I'm concerned.
Correct me if I'm wrong, did we already purchase LEDs for the tree? I know we did LEDs for everything else. So my question would be.
No, we replaced half, but I don't know if you. I thought it was the town hall only.
I see Liz shaking her head yes.
I think we did get the tree light.
I thought it was just the hall. I know we're doing stage.
We did one stage and then another. You know, so based on the answer question, the weight and all that, LEDs, I would think there would be a lot lighter and all that, so.
I have a question for Dale and Liz. Have we had any residents complain about the entrance of the tree and come to us with a desire to see that tree replaced?
Well, if you remember, Bob had already said it has maybe one more year left. I mean, we knew this last year, that it was, it worked at this time.
There are clearly two dead branches up there. They're obvious to eye.
Well, I had a spruce tree, remember, from my well, and it had a lot of dying branch stuff. And I had a few years back, my wife was concerned that it was dying. And we had a tree expert come up. He assessed, says, no, these blue spruces do get this needle thing, and the bottom branches die off like that. But he told me that my tree was perfectly healthy and was staying for many, many years. So my concern is, has this been professionally assessed that this tree is not going to last more than a season or two, and has there been residents? We're talking about expense of, at all, expense of doing things for the village park, and yet we're just going to throw some stuff on the tree. I would like to see some more professional opinion of whether that tree really is in bad shape or not. And if we do replace it, does it have to be a 20-foot tree? Why not a 15-foot tree? So as small as we let it grow up and mature and place.
And the funny thing is, we just had our resident expert just leave, so, I mean. Oh, okay, so he is still here.
This is my thought, and it's, I'm always that, you know, left-handed thinker. But we were requested by Oakland County for Oakland 2020 to possibly plant an oak tree in Oakland County, and they're asking each community to do that. And of course, immediately I thought of, this is my thought, can you imagine an oak tree there? Shade, people underneath it. You could put lights on it. You could have chairs, you know, the benches underneath.
Don't make a mess, too, with the fall, those oak leaves and oak leaves.
So does this, though, but you've been thinking, you know.
And acorns and.
So I just simply am throwing that out there. I think it would be an awesome, beautiful tree right next to that Old Town Hall, and if we decided to put a pavilion or anything underneath there, it would just be perfect. Photos, beautiful, it's just an option before we decide to go with the tree.
I have a question for you. This tree that we're talking about replacing, have you had a chance to look at that tree?
I just walked in there for this. Lois, I don't know what you're talking about. Tree.
By the Old Town Hall, the blue spruce that they definitely.
It's not a blue spruce. Everybody calls it a blue spruce, it's a balsam spruce. So there, but what's the question?
How does it look? Is it tiny?
Is it dying? Is it dying? There's two branches that are clearly dead on that tree. Upper quadrants of it down low look pretty healthy. We're talking about possibly replacing that tree.
Well, let me look at it before you guys go to that drastic step, because it might just, trees always are losing individual branches.
So do you think a good idea would be to say to have it professionally evaluated first before we decide whether to replace? And that would make us feel vulnerable.
Councils will do whatever they want with this, but I would suggest to you that regardless of what an expert says about how much more life this tree has, it looks bad. And something needs to be done. If you want a different kind of a tree, if you want a different height of tree, but it's a tree that needs to be gone.
We could also take a look at this in the spring, too. That's another.
I say I'll go look at it. I don't want to look at Dan's texture. I want to look at it in person.
So, I mean, is this a decision that should be made right now, is what you're requesting?
If you're not ready to make the decision, I would suggest you table it. It's not critical. It's not the beginning and the end of anything critical. It's not dangerous. There's no immediate concern, other than we were hoping, thinking if we could do it now, we would have it in time for the Christmas season.
I make a motion to table this topic until our next meeting to give those maybe time to get more professional opinion on this case that tree and some other options.
Other bids or smaller trees?
Other potential options, as Timmy had suggested, different type of tree.
I'd support that. So I'd like to amend the motion. So I believe that Dale brings a good point. There is a concern that the tree is dying. So upon professional review and proper communication amongst council, if that decision is made by a professional prior to month end of October, would we allow him to go ahead and move to replace that tree not to exceed 25?
Well, I see. Make it a.
So we don't issue it right now, so instead we.
Table the current topic, so I don't see how that. I make a motion to table.
Well, my point is rather than wait until the end of October.
Would one of the things we ask him is if it will make it till spring period? We can go this Christmas, leave the tree up, and then deal with it in spring. Why, right? I mean, would it be safe to leave it up?
So, yeah, if we're not ready to replace it, absolutely.
Madam President, has the motion to table been?
No.
Supported?
Oh, yes, sorry. Supported by Robinson, yes.
Before you order, you don't table the motion, you're postponing it. If you table it, you make the decision at the end of the meeting.
You can, Dale will issue like a motion to another meeting if you want it.
You can postpone it to another meeting.
All right, so let's go back and clarify. What is your motion?
I guess my motion would be to postpone this agenda item to the October.
Are we candid anything, or just postpone it here? Would we like to?
I have amended a lot of time. I put it on the table.
All right. My Councilman Hayden's for, my Councilman Robinson. Any further discussion? Would we like that right back? Very good.
I'll take you back.
We dare you.
Motion to table or postpone. A motion to the October meeting for the, making a motion for professional opinion.
I would just suggest it shouldn't be a motion to table a motion because there wasn't any make. So the motion is table or postpone the item, the agenda item.
The motion was to postpone the agenda to the October.
So motion to postpone agenda item to end of month, October meeting to allow time for professional evaluation of tree.
Do we need to have the vote?
Motion on the table, my Councilman Hayden's for, my Councilman Robinson. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. And item D is our replacement of the mower purchase.
The village has budgeted $15,000 to replace one of our mowers for this year. We received two quotes. One is for a Kubota 24.8 horsepower diesel engine and a 60-inch deck for $15,095.22. And one is for a Toro with a 25-horsepower engine and the same deck size for $13,544. The bids are attached. We are recommending that you purchase the Kubota, and I have a suggested motion. Is this a new brand? And is it, I'm sorry, did you say it was replacing another mower, or is it adding to the existing? It's replacing the existing mower that is worn out. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of Kubota ZD-1211-60, commercial mower in the amount of $13,095.22 from Flint, New Holland.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Scornica. Any further questions, discussion?
We'll continue to use the other one just in case as a backup, or do we plan on selling that?
We'll sell it or part it out or do something with it. We've put a lot of repair costs into it.
And just for, how old was that old mower, is there?
That I don't know.
And then we'll just adjust our CIP.
Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Scornica. We both have that, please. Let's- Bryce?
Yes.
Hoxwell?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. Next up is a cell spreader.
Next item we have is for a cell spreader. We have, currently, we have one, and we have budgeted $6,500 to replace the current cell spreader. That because of age and repair and other items is not in the best condition, but we will retain that as a backup tool. We've received two bids, one from Bostic Truck Company Center for $5,014. It has an eight-foot stainless steel striker with two-yard capacity, including, that includes the installation on it. The problem with this particular item is that it's operated by an onboard computer, and we have received feedback from other users that that is problematic, not immediately, but it, over time it is, and it's not a repair that we can do in-house. We would have to send out for, and typically is relatively expensive to do. The other bid that we had is from Southern Truck Company, and that bid is for $5,988. It has a three-yard capacity unit that's easier to fix by our own staff and operated by a direct wire system that is much more reliable. For the fact that there's more capacity, that it fits better on our existing equipment, Mr. Hoxwell and I both recommend that the village purchase a more expensive item.
So it doesn't specify that it's stainless steel like the first one does? Is this a stainless steel box steel?
Yes.
Maybe it is also stainless?
I believe so.
Did you see that?
Well, you know, that I'm not sure of it. There is the, what they call the coated steel top screen, but it is, it's one that Bob's familiar with, and it's reliable for long-term use. So it's not stainless? I don't believe so.
Holly Hopper?
Yeah, that would be my concern, is if it's not stainless, it's going to be more prone to corrosion and wear out sooner than the stainless steel.
But how much more is stainless steel? I mean, stainless steel is really expensive or something like that.
Well, the three-yard capacity quote is actually less. It's smaller capacity, but it's a little less expensive than this one that doesn't stick with stainless steel. But they, I can understand the concerns about if there's electronics in it that are not, that they have some complaints about, like, oh, yeah, I would rather have something that's more reliable. But I do have concerns like Dan about materials. Is that going to hold up with the salt?
So do we know the lifespan of that, that item that we chose that's higher? How long could we expect it to last? I mean, obviously, equipment's only as good as you treat it, right? So it's very rare, winter time, you're going to hose down a salt spreader, but salt is highly corrosive. Right, we all know that, right? And when you're talking about a coated piece of steel, all you take is just a little bit of mar and coating, and that's where your corrosion's going to start, so.
The road salt has any little bits of, pieces of stone chips of gravel that gets scratched.
The staff that we have right now with our DPW, this is going to be maintained in excellent condition. I mean, the one they've had, they've had for many, many years, and probably a normal DPW would have been thrown out years ago. So I'm confident that whatever this is, and Bob is very strong, he prefers this other one primarily because of the computer, but also the extra capacity and the experience that other communities have had with it, they've had better use of this particular model. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of a three-yard capacity extended chute salt spreader from Southern Truck Equipment in the amount of $5,988 pursuant to quote number Q-11628.
Support. I trust Bob's judgment.
Me too. Motion by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Hayden. Any further questions, discussion? Liz, maybe, is that a real call over there? Hoxwell?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you. Next up is the staff wage adjustments.
I want to correct part of what I gave you in this motion, because based on the knowledge that I had at the point in time, I said that during the last two years, the clerk and treasurer have been, and that's all correct, but I said that there was no extra compensation. I learned later that in fact, there was an increase made last year for, I think, for Liz and for Bob in the process. But for the typical time of the year that you look at in changes in the wages for staff is July 1st, that was postponed until the arrival of a village manager. And my recommendation to you, as I've given it to you, is for a 4% increase for Liz and Beth, 3% being an annual increase, where if you look at the, what we've provided with what other communities have done is in line with what other communities have given in increases for their people. The 1% would be in recognition of not extra time, because they were compensated for all the time that they spent, but for recognition of the extra stress of the interim between managers and the extra stress of having me here. Because there's nothing in that office that I know where it is. There's nothing that, about what has been done and how it's done that I know without asking Liz and Beth both to give me the information, to find the information for me. Hopefully, over a period of time, I won't have to ask all those silly questions, but right now I do. And so from that standpoint, I think they're entitled to some additional compensation for those purposes. And so my recommendation to you is, as it stands, that it would be a 4% increase for Liz and Beth and a 3% increase for all of the DPW staff. And I'm asking that you consider making a retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year. So Dale, your comment about last year's pay increase, for the record, I believe Liz got 5%, Bob got 5%, I believe Beth got 3%. So what you're recommending is 5% last year, 4% this year for Liz, 5% last year for Bob, and 3% this year for Bob, and then 3 and 3 for Beth and the rest of the DPW. Because the rest of the, didn't the other DPWs also get 3% last year? Yeah, I'm recommending 3% for the other two DPW's staff. I'm recommending 4% for Beth, which is 3% increase plus the 1% for the additional stress of the work. So typically in the industry, when someone performs well, you get a performance bonus. So it's never added on to your salary, so it's part of your year-over-year salary. You know, nice job, guys. Everybody did a great job stepping up, and I appreciate the transition help. You know, here's an extra bonus dollars that ever, that's typically a one-time payout for that type of additional help and going above and beyond for that type of work, as opposed to growing it into an hourly rate wage that carries on year over year. I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that statement. I'm just, my suggestion is, in this instance, because of, and what, another year around, what I want to bring to you is a comparison to other communities around us with like positions. What do they pay? What, how, what's their history? And then we'll be, we'll be in a better position to make a more thoughtful decision on all that process. I didn't have time to do that this time. Just so you're aware.
I know at the last meeting, we asked for a report of the hours that were reported for, during that time. So I know Tony was going in the office and doing the interim position, and it was said that there wasn't a lot of hours that were included, but that you were going to provide us with a report. We were able to get a report together for us for this meeting?
I tried-
Of the number of hours.
I tried to get some additional information, but most of the data that dealt with the hours and stuff was requested as a, I think, a freedom of information request. And that, all of that information has been provided to you. That was just for council trustee compensation for meetings. So when it came to employees, I thought we heard that really there was an exorbitant amount of overtime incurred, but maybe the day-to-day within their hours were maybe a little bit stressful because of the lack of a manager. That's the point that I'm trying to make. I think that, I'm not aware that there was any appreciable difference between their normal schedule and the schedule that they had when without a manager there. There may have been some small amount, but I don't think it was anything significant. I can go in, back and check each week and find out if that's important to your decision, but I'm not aware that that's true.
But July is their annual review, per se. Bill did their review. You had a chance to look over their review.
I did.
And you have chosen that they have, they're deemed to receive these, correct?
Yeah, this is, this is my recommendation for what should happen for this year.
So it's not based on two months, it's based on a year?
Yes, yes. I reviewed all of it, and everybody's-
So all the questions are dwelled on the past two months. This is a year review evaluation, and this is what you've deemed that they deserve for the year?
It was about the, it was about the 1%. It was about the additional 1% being added on for the, for the, during the tenure that we had a vacancy.
Yeah, the 1%.
I mean, it's 1%, right, right, but it was-
Extremely small, so.
But based on our last meeting, we asked for a report, so I was just looking, you know, for the report, for the-
Yeah, and really, the 1% is not just for what happened over the last year, but what's happening today.
Like a transitional, like the other order.
Yeah, I mean, it's stressful for a small staff when you get somebody who doesn't know where the paperclips are, and you've got to stop everything you're doing to go find paperclips for them, so. And we're still working through that, you know. I'm getting told everyday things I'm supposed to do and not do.
Did we ever get a callback from Holly?
I did not.
Well, I make a motion to approve the wage adjustment as follows. Bob Hoxwell, 2714, Mike P., 2104, Pete V., 1485, Lizzie, 1912, Beth L., 2269. And their new rate should be applied retroactively to the first pay period of July.
Can you say they're getting very slowly? I mean, those were all the new R B rates, right? That was the motion, I'm sorry. No, 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 no. I'll support that.
I have not come up with that on my own. Um, wait. I do want to point out that last year, or, yes, last year, when we decided to do the 5%, because we did recognize the extra efforts that, that particularly Liz and Bob had to, you know, run a lot of the load, we did give the 5%, and then we also did do that flex benefit as well, which we had already said that we weren't going to do, and we ended up doing it, so, just for the record.
Any other questions coming?
I'd like to just to comment that our village manager, Dale, said that- For the next meeting you'll have? No, the next year.
Yeah.
When we do reviews again. Yeah, you will have a larger comparison. So you'll know what other communities are doing. That's why we, I added this one thing, asked Liz to get from the other communities what they had done, so that I could show you what has happened this year in the other communities. But what I want to do is look at the positions and the amount that we're paying and compare it to other communities and see how we stand. Of communities of like such? Yes, yes.
Because based on this, it's like basically the average is 2.5% of what, you know, Roland and Brandon and Lake Orion have done.
Right.
Yeah, right, it's not by classifications overall.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Hoxwell?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you very much. And the next item is the discussion of moving the regular meetings to the Old Town Hall. I know the concern was having, not having air conditioning. We now have air conditioning. Is that a thought process new year, immediately, never, whatever?
My concern is the setup. We, it took many years to get us to where we're at today from a volume standpoint for the residents to listen to the videos that go on. Once we move into the Old Town Hall, I believe that the video quality will suffer and I think it will be very difficult for residents to hear us as we converse. That's my concern.
Well, we have a platform of sorts, or are we all, are we all made for together?
No, it was, we traditionally, back to where it used to be, was, is your main floor in there. Cameras were up above. Frank has said the cameras, they now have new equipment. It's a smaller room, so you should be able to hear more, but obviously, we haven't done it with-
How did, how did the video and the audio turn out when we had our group?
The management on here?
I mean, I think it turned out, I mean, it's hard to hear, I think, any meeting, you know, when you listen to a village or a township meeting. I don't think it's any different. It's not clear, but I don't think it's worse.
Is someone pushing us out of this? Because this is a very nice floor, very nice lighting. Everything's professionally done. It's just, you know, I just feel like we're moving back a step when it comes to holding meetings in the Old Town Hall, as opposed to having it professionally presented for everybody to see here. Well, the other thing that I'd like to point out to council is that there is very likely some additional expense that we'll incur if we make the move to Old Town Hall, like the overhead projector. There is no overhead projector currently in Old Town Hall. We would have to purchase that if we still wanted that ability. And I'm not sure what else there would be. There would be other things that are in place here. Microphones and such.
Do we have a portable projector already, or no?
We own half of that.
Because, I mean, to be honest, I don't know how often, in, since I've been back on council, we haven't had that many occasions when we needed to use a projector that's in here. So I think that, you know, a portable projector with a portable screen would be adequate considering the frequency with which we would need it. But one of the things that I like about the idea of going to the Old Town Hall, this is kind of one of the things I like about our planning commission meetings, is because we're down at the same level with the citizens, and it makes it, I think that that, to a degree, makes it give a more accessible feel at meetings to the citizens and residents, to the council, or the planning commissioner, or to anybody. You know, when we're sitting up here on pedestal, it kind of like puts us a little bit of a sense of wall of areas between us, and I prefer being down where it's more just direct and more open feeling.
The last thing that I would like to have you think about, and I'm not trying to speak for or against this, is the parking. There's much better parking here than there would be if we used the old ball. I mean, there's, we have the village parking lot that's closer there that could be used, but there is, depending on how many we have, there's ease, more ease with parking, and because Michigan is a state that three-quarters of the year, it's not easy to get in and out of your vehicle to meetings, the parking would be better here than it would be in the city.
I'm not sure I would agree with that because I come in here and I'll kind of check for weight around.
I walk down here just to leave some available parking.
And I think the reason why, you know, was the discussion was when they were possibly talking about moving from here. That came back to, well, then we would be back to the Old Town Hall. What would we need to do? And I think, you know, finishing that up with the air was the next step in that. I would love to see it historically where, in our village where we belong. And that's just my personal opinion, but if there's concerns then-
And it's an opportunity to showcase that too. We have citizens coming in to see another one of our nice resources that we have, the Old Town Hall.
Just for the record, I believe the village at one time owned this. And then we either sold it for a dollar or, and, or gave it to Brandon with the Brandon Township to maintain the building, et cetera, right? So it's, it's not like we're in a Brandon Township building. It is a Ortonville, it's considered Brandon Township, but I believe it is still a Ortonville building.
This was actually the fire department?
Fire department, please.
Thank you. And please.
Well, there's definitely some concerns.
I was gonna say, so you know what? If we want to have it as a discussion and address it, or if you're ready to make a decision, whatever. I didn't, like I said, I know the discussion was if they sold, that was an issue. If we had air, that was an issue. So I just thought it was natural. If it is a question, we'll figure it out, nobody cares. All right, so do you want to just officially table it or will we make a decision? Officially postpone it?
Postpone.
Anybody?
I don't think there's a motion to be made, so if there's no motion, there's no action. They don't have to table anything, we're postponing.
I would wish that we go, go to the Old Town Hall sooner or later.
I kind of like the Old Town Hall too, just the playroom. It's, it's an old town, it's our town. But it has no bearing on, you know?
So is that-
The re-.
Pat, do you plan to make a motion?
Well, I thought I did.
Can I, can I ask a question though?
Hold on real quick, just real quick.
Has there been support?
Hold on, real quick.
There is, oh.
Hold on, one minute. So.
I would make a, I would make a-
Pat has made a motion. What is sooner rather than later? Because we had a timeline on the question.
Oh, I would think October 1st, or, you know, October 28th would be when we're going to make this.
First of the year.
Would you still intend to support it?
No, I, I would like to, I've enjoyed it the times I have known it.
Well, you have to make a motion before we talk about it. You can always change it.
I make a motion.
I know, I'm, Mark's.
Oh, Mark's.
Has to know, make it, his decision.
Or anybody, I'm good.
Well, he already supported it, but.
You know, I'm, I'm not going to support that.
Can I support?
No.
Okay. Mark, would you like to make a motion? That's, motion's off the table.
Oh, just say, I, I can make a motion. I'll make a motion, just to stay here. We're already set up. At this, at this point, I'm, we don't have to make that.
Okay, I thought you were going to make a motion moving January 8th. That's what I thought you were going to say.
I support, I support Mark's motion. We have a motion and supported, we stay here.
We'll take it off the table, we'll stay right here.
All right, that's fine.
And go, and go.
I missed a suggestion.
We still can consider that, we're going.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's nothing in stone here.
No, we flow. We are on unfinished business.
I was gonna suggest we go back and forth, and I thought that's silly. I mean, we can, we can do that.
We have, we have-
And we still have a CBD discussion, which is our unfinished business eight. So Liz, you started with that. Do you want to continue or do you want me to do that? Did we vote on that motion?
No.
No, we didn't, we don't need it. I thought he was going to make a motion to start with January, so that's why I asked him to make a motion.
No second motion, so we're just not going to do anything.
Did you want to continue with that? No, because I know you, you did it when it was new business. Do you want to-
We're just gonna go with the agenda. The only research that I received was submitted by trustee Hayden and was provided to Pat.
And I emailed everybody, yes.
I did see.
Madam President, may I suggest to you that because it is an agenda item on, you need to do something with it. You need to table it or-
It, it's a discussion item, you have to table it? There was no motion, it was a discussion as to creating a timeline. So do we need to-
But there needs to be some finality to that discussion. You're either gonna, you're done with it or, or something. Because it is, is an, is an item on your agenda.
Okay.
So what would Robert's rule be appropriate? Postpone indefinitely or what?
Yeah, no, Mark made his motion.
The motion, one motion I heard made by someone was to remain here. So that would mean a motion.
Yeah, that was, that was a motion.
And if that's made and supported, then, then vote on it. Thank you.
Your motion is?
To remain here until support.
And you supported it?
Yeah.
Right. Motion by Councilman Botsu, supported by Councilwoman Ashman. Any more discussion? Ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a real call vote on that? Is that two or three, I don't know. Please, let's be a real call vote. George?
No.
Kayden?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Sbornica?
Yes.
Bryce?
No.
Botsu?
Yes.
Ashman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, four to three.
As for staying here?
All right, now we can discuss the CBD oil discussion. Sorry, switch any ones there?
Oh, it's okay. So at the last meeting, it was requested that everybody do their own research and send supporting documents to me. The only supporting documents I received were from trustee Hayden and President Bryce.
And just for record, I didn't send anything in, but I did seek out professional medical advice on that topic and I'm supportive of the, the CBD products for medicinal uses.
Yeah, I, I would also like to add that there is also an invitation that went to all the council members for a CBD class that was happening down in Corriston. And I'm happy to say that I did see our village manager attend that. I talked about myself as well, so they had a lot of good information on there. One thing I would like to make clear is that they did make it very clear that there is a very clear difference between hemp products and marijuana. They are both the same plant, but hemp is very high in CBD and other types of cannabino- cannabinoids and very low in THC as opposed to marijuana, which is primarily cultivated to be high in THC, which is the part that makes you high. So hemp products do not make you high, but they have been, a lot of, a lot of evidence that there's a lot of potential medicinal benefits from them.
So for the public knowledge, we're talking about an extract from marijuana, cannabis. And the extract is removing the THC and the remaining piece of it is the CBD, CBD. And it's an oil, typically an oil extract. It's used for topicals, for ailments from people that have cancers and the after-effects of radiation and many other body ailments where there is medical proof out there that support the use of relieving these symptoms of various medical conditions. So that's what I received from a medical professional and there is, there is support to that. So I'm not sure if those out there knew exactly what we were talking about.
Really?
Absolutely. Yeah, I also did get some, in, in the research I have, which was provided, and they also reinforces the class that we went to, is that pure CBD, which is cannabidiol, is the technical name for it. If you get that isolated from the hemp product or the hemp oils, it can, does not contain THC and it will not test positive in a drug test. Because many of the products out there are what's called a full-spectrum product. It means they contain not just the isolated CBD, but also other cannabinoids. There are trace amounts of THC and they did state that it could result in a false positive, but it's unlikely unless it's not a high-quality product or if people are taking a very high dosage level of the CBD products. But they did recommend that if you have any concerns about that, probably better not to take those products. So it's, it's, as I had stated the last time, it's kind of like, the, the buyer, the consumers have to be aware of this potential and they have to make their choice of themselves. But it's a perfectly legal product and many people swear by its uses. There's a lot of very good evidence about seizures too. It's been very effective in, in certain cases with certain seizure conditions too. So it has been proven to be a very, people who have had really difficult cases have, have called it like a wonder drug for certain rare seizure conditions. So it's not medically backed by the FDA, but as long as it's not marketed that way, so.
So would you mind reviewing for us what they're requesting from us again, so we know what our consensus is?
From last season?
From when the call, what the consensus was for the business moving it. I mean, what the question was for us to make sure we have a consensus.
Okay, so we have received interest from a local pharmacy, moving their business into the village where the extra spaces for the Fit Body Boot Camp is, they are a local pharmacy, well-known, and would like to carry a line of CBD oil. And they wanted to make sure that council was okay with that before signing their lease.
So do we have any further concerns on that or are we, the consensus that?
Until they come up.
Well, I think one of the things I would suggest to council is that currently you do not regulate it. You do not have any ordinances prohibiting it. And I think that is the extent of what should be told to these people. Not either that you support them doing it or don't support them doing it, but we have, we are not currently regulating it.
Agreed.
Yep, sounds good.
Good point.
Followed, yep.
Consensus? Consensus? Thank you.
Their plan is still, their plan is still to move in. Did you hear from them? I have not heard from them, just curious.
We'll advise them of, of the, then they'll make their decision.
All right. Item 14 is the village manager's report.
I'm happy to answer questions on any of the pre-prepared items that I have placed in your packet. But I have a few things that I would like to add to that, that report. First of all, I want to advise the villages and council and residents, there are three vacancies on the DDA board right now for four-year terms. Applications may be obtained from the DDA office or on their website to be considered for appointments, which would come to this, this council to, to deal with. There are also currently two positions up for appointment on the planning commission for three-year terms. Applicants, applications may be obtained from the township office. The president recommends the appointments to the planning commission, subject to council approval. One of those people is currently still serving on the, on the planning commission and there's one vacancy from the, from the person who resides. So there are two positions open there. And, and I'll try to do something like this over time, so there's some advance notice. And we, on our website, will make it clear when there's some advance, even if it's someone who, in all likelihood, can be reappointed, we will make it clear that people can apply. The next thing that I wanted, that just came up recently that I want to bring to your attention, we have a formal hearing set for October 30th at 1:30 at the district court for the car wash dumpster, where the owner of that property has refused to follow the direction of council to have them enclosed and asked to be put in a position when they could make their argument before court. So we now have them in a position where we'll have a formal hearing at court.
Is this is the quarter car wash right here off of South Street or?
Off, off, off Sub Street, yeah. Yeah, and, and, and our attorney will handle that hearing.
I didn't know that was even going into litigation or the words, a dispute that, that would go to the court system. That's the first time I heard that.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought that that had been communicated to you before. It is something that I've been dealing with since I've been here.
It's been on the ordinance report for the last three months.
They received a ticket and immediately called in, requested a hearing, which then the discussion was how that's handled with the lawyer and then that is when the deal started.
So then if we win, which I think, then they have the court and attorney fees then, right? So we'll go after them.
So they have an enclosure, to my knowledge, now. They just don't want to put the gate out in front of it.
No, they have nothing around it.
Nothing?
It's just the dumpster.
The car wash.
Mm-hmm. Maybe that's the pitch. Right, you can see it from South Street, it's sitting there. The next item I have is September 27th, Friday, the Brandon Township Library is being reopened at 9:00 AM with a ceremony. You're all welcome to be there. And, and the next item is today we received the master plan, finally received the master plan update from Row and we will get that to you as soon as possible.
From McKenna?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we finally got all-
So we got it from Row, huh?
No, no, I'm sorry.
No.
I, I did write down Row too, I didn't mean that.
I was concerned about how long it was going to take for them to just update the maps. I think that's, wasn't that all we were waiting for, is the updates on the maps? Or there were some additional?
I thought there was some format issues.
There were other issues there and, and, and you know, you should also know that we're still sitting on at least one of their latest bills because we've asked for detail and haven't received it. So they're not going to get paid until we know the detail, when you see it. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comments and now agenda items only. Anybody want to step up and share something with us, please?
I would like the media minutes to reflect my comments in their entirety. I want them read into the record, please. First of all, I'd like to thank, oh, my name is Wayne Rolls. I live at, for North Church Street. Been on this council for eight years until this coming November. I'd like to thank Mr. Robinson, trustee Robinson, for his leadership in the way finding signage issue with the DDA. Some of the issues that came up there had to do with timelines. And what I'm, what we're, what I'm hearing, and it's kind of a summation of this entire council, is that we want to, we want to analyze things to the nth degree. You sometimes hear this referred to as analysis by paralysis. What happens is that nothing gets done. To my point, the way the signage issue could take three or four years. We have businesses that need your help immediately. We can do some really quick, easy, inexpensive things to trim up, brush around the sign across some jets, can't read it, doesn't make sense, little things like that. We've talked with our new village manager about that. The other thing is that when we built, when we did the Ball Street Bridge replacement three years ago, four years ago, which was a three-quarter million dollar project. So the reason why we got that project, why we won that award from the state of Michigan, was that we had done our shovel-ready research. We had everything in order. And when that came about, we won that award. We, we had done our homework and it did take time. But to your point, you need details, you need cost analysis and so forth. My next point is, is that the new sidewalk, we have sidewalk expansion plans. They've been engineered, we paid $15,000 for sidewalk expansion along Myron Street and Nerron Street, and it's still not been done. Now, I've heard excuses after excuses, one of them being, well, the bids came in too high. Well, my, my comment is, spend the money we have. We have six, we're sitting on $61,000 to add some sidewalks to a town or to a street that's never had their sidewalks, ever. They have no sidewalks. They have no sidewalks. They're being forced to walk down the roads. Again, paralysis by analysis. The prices probably will never come in lower. So let's build, let's spend $61,000 worth of sidewalk replacements. Get it done. Spend three, four years, it's crazy. Another thing, my neighbor this past week lost their house. They were forced to move out. Eighteen and North Church Street. Steve and Phyllis Huck. They lost their house because of a septic issue. They also lost their house because they were, he has Alzheimer's or he has Parkinson's. It drained them financially. I gave them application to go to Oakland County for home improvement loans. They made $200 per month too much from their pension disability. They could not get any money from any place. I went to Brooks Patterson personally a year ago. But I talked to him. I said, this community does not have the money to do any kind of community sewage system. And it keeps on going on and on and on. Right now, the Thompsons Hardware is empty because of a sewage issue. Right now, the former Will Point is empty because of a sewage issue. You have people that want to move in there and use those buildings right now. They already have purchase agreements. They already have plans to move. But that came up, and Dr. Reggiani moved out of this area five years ago. And you know what? I was at a golf outing this year, and he was trashing you. He was trashing the council, the Ortonville Village Council, because he had to leave. I corrected him. It was not the council. It was not our community. It was the Oakland County Health Department. Again, because of sewage issues. These issues are not going to go away. I just want you to know that there are real, live people who are losing their homes. This is not like replacing a roof, as Mr. Bussu would like us to think. You know, I buy my house, I replace my own roof. This is something that is bigger than that. It can't be handled. People are losing their homes. Lastly, there was a project started to increase or to improve the drainage along, down Mill Street? I understand. Down Mill Street and also Church Street. And somebody said, the DEQ came along and said, oh, you can't do it. You didn't have the permit. That doesn't mean you can't do the project. You just didn't have the permit. So why don't you go get the permit and do the project? Indeed, our DPW men have saved this community over a quarter million dollars by doing things themselves. We need to recognize that and remember that. So these are things that are unfinished, and they need to be addressed. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'm quick. My name's Connie Carlin. I live on Crescent Hill Drive. I noticed while I was walking through town, the trees on the street in front of the fire department, all those trees, the grates are growing into the trees. They've overgrown the hole in the grates, so I don't know what's going to happen to those trees, because the metal grates are growing inside of the tree trunks. So I just thought those need to be looked at. I'd hate to lose those trees.
Good point.
All right. I have a few suggestions. This, no more than you should make legal decisions without consulting an attorney or engineering decisions without consulting engineers. You folks have no business really making major natural resource management decisions sitting here without consulting any natural resource management professionals. You think it's a simple thing, but really it's not. And it's one thing, let's see. If one of you made a motion that from now on Ortonville is going to be the capital of Estonia, and you voted on it, and it passed, it still wouldn't make Ortonville the capital of Estonia. And I guess I'll leave it that. It applies to whatever we're talking about earlier. Thank you.
I'd like to speak on a positive note. The concern is that you may or may not be familiar with, has been involved in a number of ways. Mr. Stewart can tell you, an agreement that was made that helped Ortonville save a lot of money. So I'd like you to consider the kinds of things and ways in which we can be helpful to your community and let you know that we are private nonprofit, and we exist by donations and by people supporting us. So I'm inviting you to come to our Song for Esquire on October 4th. And it's a way to find out what the consensus is doing and also to help with your ticket that supports the work we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on that agenda items? Your last chance. Thank you very much. Do you have a trustee comments? Can you start coming some, please?
The Heritage Garden has once again come up, and this is not the first time bringing this up. You know, we need, I'm all for, you know, the indigenous plants, the protected species and all that. However, it has not been maintained in a fashion that we believed it was going to be. I would like to propose that the DPW get in there, kind of check things out, cut things back, prepare for fall, and look at possibly transferring a lot of those plants to the area where the blacksmith shop is being erected, because since that is going back in time, if you will, at the man's school in Old Mill, I think that would be a perfect spot for some of those plants that were here during that time to be put where those houses are. I would like to propose that. And based on the information that we did tonight by approving the additional equipment, which I think is overdue, so I don't have a problem with that. But we, a year ago, I sent an email to Bill Sprague asking him about checking out what it would take to move the DPW to our Naren Street property. I understand there's going to be costs associated and maybe the senior center in that area now. But if nothing else, I think we need to explore putting up a barn of some sort so that we can protect our equipment, so that everything is safe, secure, and protected from the winter and the summer heat. So I would propose that we research a barn of what will take care of our needs to at least put everything undercover. I also had asked Dale earlier to come up with the list of everything that our village residents with their taxes cover. I think it's, since we just paid our taxes, I think it's a good reminder to the residents of what we do provide or what we don't provide, and what we could possibly just evaluate and check that out. Because we did talk about before about maybe we pick up that sort of thing. So Mr. Stewart will keep providing that to us as well. I do want to thank the DPW on Edward Street, that does very well, that repair that we did where the buses sit. I do want to encourage everybody to September Fest, Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM. And like I mentioned, we have the kids' games, pie eating contest, pie baking contest, and there's also kids baking as well, and hot dogs and soup. And again, we have the ghost tours the end of October. I do want to validate or verify, I should say, the DDA meetings, if they're televised. I know at one time they were, but I think they stuck, and I'm not sure if they're continuing. If you can just check that out. I already made my recommendations, which isn't more a lot, so we'll keep that.
That's, it's for me.
I would like to mention that last week on Friday, the Brandon football team honored all of the first responders, including police department, fire department, and they even included our CERT team, speaking of CERT team and events in our community. We have a whole bunch of events coming up. Next week alone, we have the Boots in the Streets on Thursday, the 26th. We have September Fest on the 28th. There's going to be Crop Walk through town on, I think that's the 6th. There is, the Homecoming Parade is, that's the 4th on Friday afternoon. We have Witch's Night Out on the 12th, and of course Halloween. And all of those events are great events for our community. There are also events where our first responders, police, fire department, and our CERT volunteers are all there, helping to make that a safe event. I would like to say I support all the first responders. And as being a CERT member myself, I also encourage anybody who's interested in putting in volunteer time and supports our community, please consider volunteering for CERT. We really need members with all these events going on. And that's all I have.
Yeah, let me take a quick second. We're going to go back to Marco.
My apologies. I was going through all my paperwork and all that. But I asked different times throughout the summer for this to keep me up to date on the testing we've been doing with the cricks and that for the E. coli levels. And just really need to make the community aware that these levels are extremely high, beyond safe levels. And so occasionally I see people down inside the correct area, you know, swimming, wading and all that. And just, I don't know if we want to, like, even post it or whatever. But I mean, we got to, you know, I mean, make sure everybody is aware that these levels are extremely high. And I don't know what all can come out of that, but nothing good, you know what I mean? So, thank you.
Can I just add a quick question there, to your point about the CERT team for volunteers? If you can just allude to where people interested can get their training or how they go about getting trained for that?
Oh, sure. They apply and are accepted. We run training classes and provide trainers. Right, so. We have, we have a CERT website out there. Just search for CERT. And I can also provide the link for that. If it's okay, maybe we could include that link on our village site, if it's okay with the rest of the council. It's okay, I'll provide that to them.
Nothing, nothing to it. I'm looking.
All right. Just a reminder, September 30th is our social media professional development. That'll be at the Brandon Library. We need our volunteers to double-check for the car show or Santa Fe.
I have the plaques with me tonight.
Yay. And you should have received in the mail, Brandon School's Distinguished Alumni, October 3rd, 6th, APM. And last but not least, Colleen, DDA did double-check on the Heritage Garden, and they have two master gardeners that have been contacted, and they're either to get together, work together, or decide between them. That's the last I heard. So definitely we'll.
Well, I know that you guys were doing it before, but.
No, I mean, like, at the meeting, that was a discussion was that.
Oh.
Yes, because it has to be done by master gardener. So anyway, there was two people that they contacted and they're to decide together, and I haven't received anything from them.
So the DDA is handling that part of it, rather than?
Yes, yes. Because it's the Heritage Garden, so it's, you know, obviously being careful what's in there, et cetera. So that will be up to the master gardeners to decide one, but we'll check back in and have Dale kind of update us as to how far we are on that.
Just a quick comment on Colleen's suggestion about possibly moving some of that heritage garden over to the new blacksmith shop. That area where the Heritage Garden now is a great meeting place. I know they play music in a very small area, no gazebo or anything like that. So if there was a chance to move the heritage, there is, I mean, obviously, there's probably so many suggestions that we could use that space for.
Mine's going to always be thin. And that's all I have. Does anybody want to entertain a motion to adjourn? Anybody want to support that? All right. Motion made by Councilman Stark, supported by Councilman Ashman.